Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and get started here. First off, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I would like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meetings information can be found in the Town of Monument website. The Planning Commissioner's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendation to the, or the Town Council regarding land use manners in the Town of Monument. Each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial objective and fair review which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself of any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. Perfect, thank you. For those attending tonight's, for those attending tonight who wish to provide comments on agenda items, you may speak to the Commission during the public comment section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak at the, on that same subject. Again, thank you for attending. We will now begin the meeting with roll call.
Thank you everyone. Starting roll call, Chair Trujillo.
Here.
Vice Chair Hours.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Egley.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Right, that completes roll call.
Perfect, thank you. And at this time, we do have a quorum. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for staff.
Collins move to approve.
Smith second.
Right, so Chair Trujillo for approval of minutes, Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
That reaches approval of minutes.
Perfect. Moving right along, public hearings and recommendations. We're gonna open this up. Staff will now present items three A and three B, and we're gonna do that on both separate ends. Is that correct, Jeff? Okay. Perfect, thank you, sir. At this time, please, it's all you, Jeff.
Thank you Chair Trujillo, for tonight's first item. We have Maverick Monument Junction Lot One, Monument Junction West filing number one. This is a preliminary final PUD plan. The project context, we have this project site is at 1,530 Laughing Lab Way. This is the southwest corner of intersection of Highway 105 and Jackson Creek Parkway. This is the proposed final, preliminary final PUD plan for record. Project con request, requesting an ordinance approving a preliminary final PUD plan for Maverick Monument Junction Lot One, Monument Junction West filing number one. The project area is 1.511 acres. Proposed use is a commercial convenience store, approximately 5,637 square feet. A fueling area canopy of 4,212 square feet. In the site data, they have a light lot coverage of 15% with 9,849. Hardscape is 40,975 square feet and landscape is 14,952 square feet. There being 62 for the hardscape, 23 for the landscape. These are the preliminary PD review approval criteria per Section 1803450 to be put into record for this public meeting. These are the final PD review approval criteria from Section 18034460. Staff's application of generally consistent. Basically, generally consistent would likely be interpreted by a court as being more likely consistent instead of less likely consistent. Or another way of interpreting it is consistent with the majority or more than 50% of the comprehensive plan purpose and the intent of the zoning district or the applicable use of specific standards. Looking at the comprehensive plan, Chapter One, the Monument Community, Page 13, reviewing development. Review of any land use applications such as the one we're looking at tonight is a two-step process with the comprehensive plan. Step one, you need to find substantial compliance with the future land use map or flume. And step two, we need to find consistency with the adopted policies. Moving to step one, the flume, the designated future land use is mixed use. Mixed use is defined as a mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience goods, services and employment opportunities for area residents. Staff's finding the proposed convenience store and fuel sales being more likely consistent instead of less likely consistent with the definition of mixed use land use category of flume. Step two, now breaking it down through the comp plan, various pieces, looking for consistency. The vision of the plan on Page 16, three of the five do comply with the community vision for this application, the proposed convenience store and the fuel sales is consistent with the majority or more than 50% of the vision of the comprehensive plan. For community values of the comprehensive plan, the staff finding is the proposed convenience store and fuel sales being more likely consistent instead of less likely consistent of the values of the comprehensive plan. Regarding viewpoints, we have a number here, one through four. This is five. Staff's finding is that the proposed convenience store and fuel sales being less likely consistent instead of more likely consistent with the viewpoints of the comprehensive plan. And we'll point out the reason why. Citizens remain concerned about their views, one sees from the Y-25 corridor and the views from the east side of Y-25 towards the mountains. Again, citizens of Monument want to ensure that the views from the I-25 corridor provide a strong small town community identity by providing adequate open lands, trees, buffers to deter noise and protect that views. So this is just the finding focusing on viewpoints of the comprehensive plan and staff's finding. Looking at goals, with the strategic goals, there are three of them, two of them comply. One, that is not in compliance, ensure that the monument adjacent portion of the I-25 corridor provides a strong small town community identity by providing appropriate open lands, trees, lighting and buffers to deter noise, life pollution and protective use. Staff's finding the proposed convenience store and fuel sales is consistent with the majority or more than 50% with the strategic goals of the comprehensive plan. Looking over the seven elements of the comprehensive plan, we really only have three that are applicable, land use, transportation and economy. With the land use opportunities, we see that there are three policies that are consistent with the policies of land use. We have an additional four of the available eight. With transportation opportunities, we have one that complies, the rest are not applicable. With transportation policies, three comply or are applied to it, but three are non-applicable. With the policies of transportation continued, we have an additional two that do apply, but two that do are not applicable. In terms of economy opportunities, there are two opportunities that do apply, three that are not applicable. Staff's findings that the proposed convenience store and fuel sales are more likely consistent instead of less likely consistent with the opportunities and policies of the comprehensive plan. Existing zoning. The site is located, it is a subject property, it is a PUD, it's vacant and commercial. To the north, there is a PUD that is in the county. It is also vacant commercial. To the south, there is a PUD, it is also vacant commercial. To the east, we have C2, which is an El Paso County zoning, it's commercial warehouse. And to the west, we have a PUD, again vacant commercial. Project history, in June 15th of 2020, the plan development PD and PD sketch plan for the village was approved. It's now referred to as Monument Junction Planned Unit Development PUD. February 7th of 2022, a preliminary final plat for Monument Junction West filing number one was approved. On May 19th of 2022, a plat was recorded. Notice that the site in particular is pointed out, Lot One, which we are gonna be speaking to tonight for the final PUD. Traffic study. In general, there are 4,149 trips weekday that were determined. Traffic compliance memo by LSC Transportation Consultants approximates that the proposed Maverick Convenience Store and the gas station will generate about a little over 4,000 vehicle trips on the average weekday. Distributed throughout a 24-hour period, this is from the report from 10/6/2022. An LOSF or better in the short term has been identified. So short-term impacts of the Phase One development are projected to operate at LOSF or better during the afternoon peak hour for the eastbound left turning movement of fat tire drive onto Jackson Creek Parkway with a stop sign. All other, if that, if a stop sign is used as your tool for managing automotive movement, all other movements are LOSD or better. With that, traffic signal is warranted. The Jackson Creek Parkway and Fat Tire Drive intersection is anticipated to meet a signal warrant due to the LOSF rating. It's expected to occur with the completion of the Maverick store based on the combined projected traffic for Lot One Maverick and Lot Four Water Burger already approved developments and the interim design condition of Jackson Creek Parkway. Let's dive into that a little bit more deeply. So the traffic study. This is the Monument Junction Addendum Memorandum from October 23rd of this year. It updates the Monument Junction TIS from March 17th of 2022. Key updates, land use information and development phasing for Lot One has been updated. Trip generation estimates have been updated. Comparisons of the current trip generation from the March report estimate have been updated. Levels of service are analyzed into three distinct phases. Phase one of short term, a short-term build-out and a future total traffic scenario. These are all referring to the general build-out of the Jackson Creek Parkway corridor. Vehicle queuing analysis was updated and there are Parkway improvement phasing updates as well in that traffic study. To help break that phasing down a little bit further. Monument Junction PD development phases, so phase one of the short term involves, this is what the traffic study included. It looked at current October 2023 residential development east of Jackson Creek Parkway. This currently involves 10 single-family homes, four duplex homes. It also takes into account traffic volumes for Lot Four Water Burger and, which is currently being built now, and then Lot One Maverick. The change in the review from the March report is that the Maverick building proposed is larger than what was originally anticipated. For the short-term build-out scenario, then moving forward as we're going through the corridor, the analysis looks at traffic volumes for Lot Two Commercial, Lot Three Commercial and Lot Five Multi-Family as well as the remaining parcels south of Lot Five. So this is an evolution of, of growth and traffic as it comes on to the corridor over time as we build this out. The third step, long-term build-out scenario, this takes into account the 2040 total traffic volumes from the 2022 TIS. So overall levels of service, phase one. Intersections along Jackson Creek Parkway, Jackson Creek Parkway, the Monument Junction PUD. The Highway 105 JCP is currently signaledized and achieves an LOS of D. A intersection Laughing Lab Way, right in and right out movement with a T intersection will get an LOS B. Fat Tire Drive at the T intersection, signal warrants for an O, from an LOSF from a stop sign to an LOSB if a signal is brought into play at that intersection of Fat Tire and Jackson Creek Parkway. October Fest Drive right away and right in is a T intersection and it has free movement. Slope side street has full movement intersection, four legs. It has an LOS of D and does, does not trigger any signal warrants. E will eventually have a future right in, right out with a T intersection and it is expected to have free movement as well. Thinking of queuing and level of service, so this really speaks directly to what's happening with that fat tire intersection and why it's receiving an LOS of F. Axis B, the eastbound left turn lane, see the red arrow. If a stop sign control is used, the long queues to form back from JCP will give you an LOS of F. If a signal control is used, it will mitigate the long projected queuing, giving you an LOS of B. Lot Four Water Burger will be developed first before the Maverick. And the eastbound left turn movement of an LOSC will occur in the AM and an LOSD in the PM. So at the point of Water Burger coming in, there won't be the need or triggering of a signal warrant. Is that clear? Does that make sense? Moving forward. Level of service analysis, taking it from the phase one to the short-term build-out scenario. All intersection movements can achieve LOSD or better with the modified timing and phasing of the warranted signals that will eventually come. And then when we get to the final long-term build-out, taking 2040 numbers here, comparable to the March 17, 2022 TIS, there wasn't much change. All intersection movements can achieve the LOSD or better with modified timing and phasing of the warranted signals. Jackson Creek Parkway has improvements of phasing of its own in the actual infrastructure itself. We have an auxiliary turn lanes and traffic control. We have proposed short-term and interim lane requirements along JCP on the south of Axis B Fat Tire Drive. The proposed roadway phasing and auxiliary turn lanes likely may be needed at access points as we build out. Four-lane roadway upgrade in the long term. Public improvements, Jackson Creek Parkway on the west side frontage. What's completed as of today is the ultimate design of JCP curb and gutter from Fat Tire Road to Laughing Lab Way. The interim Jackson Creek Parkway striping and controlled movement installations are in. And the ultimate design of Jackson Creek Parkway's D cell right turn lane for Laughing Lab Way south of Highway 105 is also in. With this project, there will be landscaping in the right of way they'll be brought in. The traffic signal at Fat Tire Drive and JCP intersections is anticipated. And we are then awaiting for ultimate design funding for sidewalk that would be on the west side of Jackson Creek Parkway going up to Highway 105 and crossing over and a crosswalk across the Jackson Creek Parkway side of Highway 105. Drainage basin, Dirty Woman Creek is what it serves. Conveys via surface drainage and private storm sewer systems towards a public storm sewer system within Laughing Lab Way. It conveys all development flows to a downstream permanent storm water quality facility and it's located in Track Day. Utilities provided will serve letters have been received for Woodmore Water Sanitation, Black Hills Energy and Mountain View Electric Association. In terms of other analysis, there was wildlife, there's no significant wildlife habitats identified on the site. Wildfire, there's no low, there's low at-risk rating for wildfires in the area. One fire hydrant will be built on the lot and a second fire hydrant in the vicinity. No unusual conditions in terms of geo-hazard, no groundwater was encountered in the borings. Mitigation measures and foundational strategies are provided in the Geotech Report. Land dedication, park dedication. Point zero eight acres. So the parkland requirement for Monument Junction PD provided 7.9 acres, they were required to provide 7.7 acres. The remaining point two acres have been applied to Maverick or portion of it, the point zero eight. So the park dedication requirements are met. School dedication is not applicable, this is a commercial property, no land dedication or fees in lieu. Public notice, we had originally scheduled this for Planning Commission in September. And then got moved to October and then into this evening for a number of reasons. But the applicant did meet noticing for all three meetings. After review and looking at the preliminary PD review approval criteria, it appears that stat, that the applicant has met all of the 13 criteria for the preliminary PD review and approval as well as meeting all of the nine and subsequent approval criteria for the final PD review. Staff's finding, application is consistent with all applicable development standards. Application adequately addresses the criteria of the title 18 Town LDC, Sections 1803, 450, 1803, 460. And the application is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. That completes our presentation from staff. The applicant is here as well as landowner who are here and they're happy to present as well.
Did the applicant have a presentation or they were here too? Did they wanna present offhand?
Would you like to, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we will.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Dice. I am a Senior Planning Project Manager for Maverick. He provided a presentation, I think it's being pulled up at this time. Maverick is a gas station seastore operator. We've been in operation since the 1950s. It's been in the Call family since the, the 1950s. Started off with Jay Call was like Flying Jay, you've probably seen the larger truck stops and all that, that, that was with the Call family. They, Jay Call's brother, I think his name is Frank, I really should know this, but I don't. He opened up the Maverick in, in the 1950s. Then in the 2000s, they merged and the Flying Jay was sold off. So now our operating company is Flying Jay, but Maverick's underneath that, that's a little bit of history on that. So go ahead, if you did the next slide, a little bit of the, a little bit of the history of, which I just covered. We recently completed the purchase of Come and Go, that was in September. We're still going through the maturation of understanding how we're going to integrate. Right now, you have Come and Go that's operating and we have Maverick that's operating. This is gonna be a long-term type of integration because we had 400 stores at the time of the, of the acquisition and Come and Go had 400 stores at the time of the acquisition. So there's a lot of logistics that are required with this. And at this time, we do not anticipate in immediately branding everything as Maverick because that's a very large project for 400 stores. There are some markets that we're overlapping in like the Utah market and Colorado market and we're selectively even looking at those to see how we're going to, how we're going to brand those. We operate 24/7, 365 days a year. We sell beer and wine and tobacco. We do not do spirits, we do not do liquor. It's not something that, that, that we, it attracts a different type of customer that we just don't. We, we've learned over the, the decades that it's not good. At the same time, we operate what we call the Bonfire Grill, which is fresh food that is made daily. Burritos of different types for breakfast, lunch and dinner. We also do salads, we do pizzas, we do sandwiches at that same time. Some of it is packaged and put on the shelves, but it's fresh, freshly made that day. At the same time, our bathrooms are open to the public, you don't have to buy anything. So if a parent has a child that has to go to bathroom, you can just stop and go in and you don't have to buy something in order to utilize the bathroom. That is a very big asset for a lot of families and something that Maverick really believes in. It's a family, believe it or not, we have 800 stores, but it is a family-owned business. Something that I really wanna point out, and we get this a lot because we do do a high-flow component, which is, which operates and allows larger trucks to come in. We are not a truck stop. We're not like a Flying Jay, we're not like a Travel America or anything like that for a lot of reasons. We do not allow overnight parking, we don't have showers, we don't have truckers lounges. We don't allow, we don't have laundry facilities, we don't even offer internet service where they can stand there and do their work, their paperwork sometimes if they do it. We like them to come in, fuel up, maybe get something to drink, get something to eat, and then we would like them to move on, just like you and I would do if we stopped and we got just regular gas. If you'd, next one, please. We already covered this, the location, next one, please. Already covered this, where it's located within the master plan. This is our overall site plan. This one, I, I utilize this one because it took off all the extraneous other things like the, the site setbacks and things of that nature. As you can see, it is where the store is budding up to the western property line. The, the vehicles will come in on Laughing Lab, take a right turn immediately into the site. We'll pull in, fuel up. We do have parking along the front and along the, 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 the south side of the building. The fuel tanks are on the north side of what we call the canopy area. We call that a starting line canopy, meaning that everything's straight in a line. And the, it's not shown on here, here, but on, on the actual site plan. The trash enclosure will be on the north side of the building on that. Anybody have any questions on the site plan? Because usually that brings up a lot of questions, I'm sorry. Okay, next one, please. This is a oblique elevation, oblique meaning you see it from an angle. One thing that, that we did talk about with, with staff is to try to incorporate the same colors as the Water Burger is using. So we found out what Water Burger colors are and we modified our colors in order to match that a little bit, particularly the brick. The brick is a little bit darker than what we normally use. So it's an ebony brick, we call it, with a, I'm not an architect, so I don't know what the color of the, but it's a, it, it, it's more of a beige. That's the best way I could do it, but it, it does complement what the Water Burger is looking at. Next, if you would. This is just a straight elevation. The building itself to the parapet wall is 20 feet high. The entrance feature that are between the two doors, we call that the doghouse, that goes up to 29 feet. That's where the Maverick sign is and everything else. This shows a little bit of the signage, next, please. This is our typical canopy and we do have signage on the canopy. The lettering is backlit as well as the mountain logo, that's our Maverick mountain logo. The canopy itself underneath to the deck is 16 feet, to the top is 19 feet. On that, now we work closely with staff and with regard to the lighting. Lighting, could you go to the next one? I think that's the, no, okay, this is our wonderful trash enclosure. We do do a brick trash enclosure. We just don't put fencing out there with slats in it. We do do a, a block and we have metal gates. So it's something that complements the building and looks like the building will be, the block will be the same color as the building. The color of the gates will be the, the, the same color as what you saw in the background of the sign and we'll get into signs a little bit here. Next, please. And here's the color palette. I wish I could read that, but I can't. Next, please. Okay, this is the building layout. So we have two entrances that come in in between the doghouse, the, if you've been to, we have a couple of stores in the, in the, in the Denver area. The cashier area is right there, it's a monitor, all the activity. The rear part is what we call the Bonfire Grill and that's where fresh food is made and everything. Now, we will only make fresh food from about 5:30 in the morning, they start putting it out 6 o'clock for people that are commuting. That will go all day long and then after a period of time, I think it's six or seven, we close down the grill and anything that is made at the last minute is put out. We do have roller dogs, if anybody likes roller dogs and things of that nature. I eat them, not everybody. And everything. The bathrooms are, are large, we have a number of stalls and they are very well lit. The doors, there aren't doors there that can be locked, you know, with, in more urban areas, we run into a lot of situations with drugs. And people utilize bathrooms where they lock the door and they, you know, they're unfortunately doing what they do in that area. We do have ceiling seating in the one little area, that's if you walk into the left right there. We also, if you go to the next one, please. Oh, here's the lighting plan, but we also have outdoor seating that, that we're proposing would be on the north side and I'll show that in another, another site plan. Yes, you could go to the photometric plan. This is the photometric plan. The importance of this is really, we understand that there are night sky ordinances. We don't wanna have blazing lights. I went down and I turned around where the Flying Jay is down here in the pilot and it's a very bright, bright operation. We needed to meet the qualifications or the standard of 1.5 foot candles average across the site, which is the first I've ever had to run into. It's usually, it's about, they, they're more concerned about the spillage at the end, at the corners of the property and off the, the property. they they're more concerned about the spillage at the end, at the corners of the property and off the the property boundaries. This is average across the site. So we did meet that that criteria. We really muted down the lights underneath the canopy so that they're not very bright. And I think when it comes to the view issue that that was brought up in the general plan, this really meets that criteria within that that section of the general plan. Because it won't be a spotlight out there as people will be looking at it at night. It'll be a very there's different hues of the LED lights. This will be more of the yellowish. And I don't want to say yellow like wish I had yellow on, but I don't. But it will be a a lower intensity. It won't be that white, white, white intensity that'll be out there as well as the building lights and everything else. Next one, please. This is our overall landscape plan. As you can see that we have a number of trees and bushes and shrubs around the the site. The trees are positioned so that it kind of blocks the building as you would be coming down 105. Particularly off the highway as well as along Jackson Creek Parkway. Now it sits up high and we have that hillside there. So we're looking at landscaping that and working with with whatever future development goes along Jackson Creek Parkway, because we do have the sidewalk there. And we're going to have to work with the city on that because there might be a the need for a smaller pony wall as that sidewalk is put in. And we're more than welcome to more than willing to work with the city on whatever requirements will be. Landscape islands on the end will be landscaped as well. Excellent, please. This is just the plant list. If you're interested in understanding what plants are and the symbols will show which trees are placed where I wanted to put this in here just to show the height of the trees. So that it's not going to be just be like four foot or six foot. Some of these trees go up to 20 feet, 30 feet, and they'll have a larger canopy, which over a period of time, over a five year period, it will provide the shade and is provide also the screening that I know that the city is looking for on this site. Next one, please. Again, this is our site plan, but I put this one in here particularly for the signage. So we're proposing two different sinages here to two different monument sites as well as the building sign. The one on the corner is going to be a monument sign, the one in the one on the laughing lab and Jackson Creek corner, I should say, is a monument sign. The other one will be what we call mid rise sign. Could go to the next one. That's what I was going to show you. So the mid rise sign will be, I believe that's 20 feet on that one. And it would be our typical Maverick logo with the with the gas pricing and the bonfire grill underneath. Next one, please. I don't have the monument sign. I wish I did. I thought I put that in there. This is our our standard Maverick entry sign. Now this shows a black background. It's not. It's more of a, it's a brown background. So it it will match what the color will be for our awnings and everything else and all the other trim that goes around the tops of the buildings. So that that is what the color will be for the background of that sign. I tried to get yes code to change that for me, but they have their program. Excellent. This is the side of the building showing the Maverick. This would be the south side of the building. Next one, please. Canopy, I think we already discussed this. I think an important thing I wanted to point out is that the Maverick name and ventures first stop and the logo will be backlit. Excellent, please. And that's the end of my presentation. Overall, we like this site for a number of reasons because it's immediately off of the highway. We like the fact that it will have a dedicated right turn in into laughing lab, another dedicated right turn in, right turn lane in there. They can immediately get in and then coming out. It's important to us because we'll utilize the fat tire entrance when the signal will come in. And I know as a customer, if I have to shoot the gap between cars coming at a stop sign or anything else, I will just, I won't utilize this the site at high periods, you know, at high traffic periods. 4,000 cars seem like a lot if you look at that, but that's an average. What we look at in terms of traffic, we call it bypass where cars are going past there anyway. We're going to be drawing them in. We take them off. They're diverted into the site. They get what they need. They come back out. The traffic is always there. We're just utilizing that traffic and providing a service to them. So I think that's an important point to make on the traffic studies is that it's not generating new traffic. It's bypass traffic. There is a small portion that that is considered new traffic because people will get off the highway and say, okay, this is a Maverick. I need to get gas and we call that diverted. So there's bypass and diverted, and we can really break that down if you wanted to. But it's takes a little bit more into consideration. And then you just have people that like Maverick and they'll go to the Maverick because they like the burritos or they like the soda or they like that and they'll go out of their way. So if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, Jeff, what we're going to go ahead and do is we're going to go ahead and open up public here.
That please chair. There are others that are in the audience that they wanted to speak from the, did the landowner want to speak or consultant team?
My name is Mark Horton, Classic Consulting. I'm the applicant on the project for the landowner and also the civil engineer. And I'm also been working on the Jackson Creek Parkway 105 improvement plans. So I can maybe give you some background and some better understanding on where those are at. And I think I sent Jeff a couple exhibits to hopefully explain that. He explained it pretty good in his presentation, but I'm sure we might have some questions on what's built now, what will be built later? What is the town building ultimately? Those kind of questions. So
Sure.
If we can show those two exhibits, I think that would be a good start. As those are being pulled up. So the interim improvements, which are actually built and constructed today, what you see out there today. Those were approved by the town and those are currently constructed. We are working on the, I guess I'll call it the phase two improvements, which improves 105 along with the rest of Jackson Creek. So what we see there on the exhibit is the yellow is anything related to highway 105. And that's all existing today. The orange represents what what has been recently constructed. So I don't know if you have the ability to zoom at all. So what what that shows? I've driven this corridor several times during the day at different times. It's very crowded. Under it's it needs more lanes and that's being worked on. What's been done today and what's out there today is as as people probably in this audience and you guys have experienced, if you're going northbound and you want to take a right onto 105. You can't get past the people waiting to turn left. We've helped that out now. That has now been extended. And now you can get past them unless they're backed way up, but it's 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 a better situation these days. So that that shows that there is a full, long left turn lane northbound and a full, long right turn lane eastbound, which is a better situation. This also shows if you're heading southbound, the right in onto laughing lab to get to the Maverick or the Whataburger. So that's all currently constructed. Somebody may ask, if I want to come back out out of Maverick and head to 105. There are some delineators, the raised kind of lit delineators that doesn't allow you. Well, I mean, you could drive through it, but you probably shouldn't. Those are in the middle of the road to I guess prohibit anybody doing a left turn in or left turn out. That's a that's a temporary condition because the ultimate improvement, if you can go to the next slide. Okay, so now we introduce the green. The green is what we are currently working on still and what's been resubmitted to. Well, there's three jurisdictions at this intersection, C dot, you guys and the county. So we've we've resubmitted these plans the second time to all jurisdictions and that's currently being reviewed again. So we're hoping within the next couple of months of getting approval of these plans. So we can start construction sometime early next year. So the green, what that shows is the orange is still there. That's what's there today. The green shows what will be constructed, which is now we got two full lanes in each direction. As you approach and enter the intersection as well as a right turn lane. It also introduces a an eastbound right turn lane onto Jackson Creek Parkway. So that that's the ultimate condition of the intersection, which I think hopefully in the next year, year and a half, everybody will be excited because that's what will be there and it will be functioning much better. Any questions? Hopefully that kind of gives everyone in the room an idea of what's going on and what will be there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any others, Jeff or?
No chair. That's the presentations that we've had.
Perfect. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open up public hearing. In this case, obviously those individuals that are here from the public, you're more than welcome to come on up, ask questions, make any statements. Will come for those individuals that are currently here. If you do come up, please leave your name, write your name and your address on the podium there. And then we'll go to those individuals that are online and Ray, I'll go to you to monitor that for us, please. At this time, are there any public comments in the room here? And there are none. Ray, I send it to you. Are there any individuals that are online?
At this time, I don't see anyone raising their hand or typing anything in chat to get my attention. So I'm going to go with no.
Perfect. I'll give it a minutes. Or less. We're going to go ahead and close the public comments or public hearing at this time. And we're going to go ahead and open it up now for commissioner questions and comments. And I open that up to the planning commission at this point, sir.
Commissioner Collins, I just curious, is the Maverick station closer to Home Depot going to stay open or will that be closed?
Is that the come and go or is that a Maverick? Okay, if it's a Maverick, yes. That's a Murphy. Okay. Yeah, we would love to close that so we can get to business. So, okay, that's all right.
So just to tell on on a commissioner column, Commissioner Smith, so there is a come and go, just a couple, maybe 500 feet to the east is how is that going to be affected? Are we going to have two Mavericks to then?
I think. Yeah, exactly. I measured it too. It's like just under 700.
500 is a good guess.
That that store right now, we're still understanding whether we're going to rebrand that store or not. Again, we just closed on the acquisition. It will take about a year to understand all of them in the Colorado market, what we're going to do. I would think that eventually it would be branded as a Maverick. It won't look the same as the building we're proposing right now. The thing about Maverick is that we have a number of locations where we have one Maverick across the street from the other. Over this, over the number of years that we've been in business. We start off with smaller stores and now because of of the need for this type of service and things like that and how the market has changed and how consumer behavior has changed and everything, we went to bigger stores. So normally what what we do is we'll open up a store and this store will be totally different than what the come and go store is. And it offers a different type of look. It offers a different type of feel and everything. So they will operate as two independent stores.
This is Commissioner, we have the several questions, if you don't mind. Future plans and layout for any EV charging stations that you'll be operating on site?
We will plum for EV charging. What I mean by that, we'll put the conduit into the ground and when the need comes, we'll be there. Our California market, I primarily do development in the California market. California market by by law, by their building code, which was they recently updated and as this past January, they require two. So we we already have a number of stores out there where we have two. And we we don't make money off it. I'll tell you that. But at the same time, there is a need for it because people traveling up and down the highway. All the cars have apps on it and saying, where's the nearest one? Oh, the Maverick has one and they can do, they can do it. It's a type two charger. It's not a type three charger. Type two charger is slower. We use a Bosch system. But yes, we we anticipate that we're going to have to put more in.
Do you, you already have plans in in the building plans for that type of service?
Yes.
Be on site. So you have to pull additional.
But we will not have the actual charger in unless we're required to do that.
Okay. Staying with fuel or fueling types. You will have diesel onsite. Is that correct? And what other type in three grades of of gas or we have four grades?
We will have the normal grades of gas will have, we usually have an ethanol free. And then I think in the Colorado market, there's a one that has a yellow pricing label on it. And I'm not familiar so much with the Colorado pricing, but that's a specific one that has a maybe more ethanol in it or something. What was that? Yeah, so all those are set by state regulation. So we have to provide that and therefore we have to show it on all our signage.
And all dispensers will offer diesel?
Probably not. All dispensers will have probably at least half. And and they're identified with the green pumps. Somebody comes in, they'll see, they'll look for the green pump.
Yeah, I guess my concern was just the larger vehicles that might be utilizing that for fueling where that would be located.
And the layout of the site is big enough that a truck, a truck with a trailer can pull in and negotiate and come around and get in. You know, fill up with diesel or for gasoline and then be able to negotiate their way.
And the only set place on the property where customers will be able to see fuel prices will be on that sign on the northwest corner. Is that correct?
Will be that sign and then on this on the monument sign that'll be on Jackson Creek. Yeah, okay. We would love to put them on canopies too, if you allow us to do the canopies. They love that in some areas.
One of my concerns is just staying with the the spirit of the comprehensive plan and in terms of providing interconnected trails, walking and biking paths. I don't really see where that shows on the on the the site plan at this point. Do you have some feel where that's going to be integrated into?
There will be a sidewalk along laughing lab. That'll be in front of our site. That will eventually connect into the sidewalk down on Jackson Creek Parkway. And then when that's corrected, there'll be continual flow for pedestrian walkway on that. We do provide bike racks on site so that, you know, customers can come in and walk their bikes and just put their bikes there.
Okay. And then last, I'm sure you're glad this will be last. I did look at the landscaping plan and I see that you've got about 6,700 feet planned for native seed mix for grasses. I'm not really sure what that means native seed mix.
It wouldn't be, we wouldn't be bringing in East Coast fescue. It would be a native grass to this area. So it would be something that would be complimentary to to the environment. So we wouldn't be introducing a specific species that could be invasive or be harmful to the environment.
I've got right now.
Quick question about signage. The tall sign, the freestanding sign, is that onsite? It I saw it quickly and it looked like it was not on the site.
I'm not sure if you could pull that up again and we can talk about that real quick. It will be onsite. It has to be onsite.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we cannot put it within the, because that's Caltrans right away. No, not Caltrans. I apologize. I have Caltrans on my mind. That's C dot right away. So we cannot put it in there. That would require a very long process to get an encroachment permit to do that type of. Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so it's the red.
It's that red bar.
Okay, I thought it was where your white box was. All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
I have a question. Or maybe the engineer. I anticipate you're probably gonna get some pretty big 18-wheelers in there every now and then because of your location.
18-wheelers for delivery only, but they're, but we, we have our fueling truck that will come in. And that will circulate around the canopy then up, and really that's it, everything.
So you don't expect any 18-wheelers to come in refueling?
No, we don't have that capacity at this site.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood what was being said there.
Now, we do offer that at other, other, uh, what we'd love to do is just push that out that way and we can make the 18-wheeler high flow if you want it.
Well, that's, that's another thing. I wanted to compliment you all on the location of the pumps, the location of the gasoline storage and its separation from the housing. I'm, I'm a big one on not liking to see any fuels around residential areas and that's a big residential area. And I think you've done an excellent job of putting that in there like that. And I want to compliment you on your presentation. You sell stations real well and it's hard to sell stations, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, they're not like. What, like a golf course without doors or anything.
I've been down that road, my friend.
Thank you.
All right, sir, a quick questions for you. On the, you said the canopies on this, at the minimum is gonna be 16 feet, top is gonna be 19. Why so high?
Because, uh, you will have maybe a box truck coming in. And that had, we have to have certain clearances for that. So the, the bottom of the canopy will be 19 and then, then the, are the canopy band going around? I mean, there's structural issues that, that, that we have to deal with, with that in order to allow that to be cantilevered.
Sure.
So that it doesn't collapse.
My concern is this. Baptist, on Baptist Road, we had everything going with the pilot. We now have a truck stop. Everything that's across the street from the, uh, right across the street from Pilot. Is canopy high and they told us that that would not be used for diesel or for trucks. Well, it's canopy high. What do you think's gonna go in there?
Meaning what's?
Probably gonna be some trucks that are gonna go in there at some point later down the line.
You will have a box truck that could, that could negotiate itself.
Sure.
Yeah.
So my concern is, I mean, down the future in five years, do I see semis trying to get in there?
No. And I'll tell you why, is because semis first off could make the turn off of, off of Jackson Creek Parkway on the Laughing Lab. But as soon as you're on to Laughing Lab, that turn right there where we, the, the cab will have to go all the way out into the incoming lane. That entrance and then the remainder of the truck will go up over the curb. Our fuel trucks, we, we have two, it, it's not one truck, it's split. So you have a smaller section in the back and then a pretty long section, uh, in the front, but it's not a 40-foot.
Perfect. I just wanna make sure that that, we understand that that 40-foot will at no point in the future be elongated in order to allow for that to become a truck stop.
No, it, it would be very hard to do that at this point because the trucks couldn't, it, it once, e- even if a truck could negotiate that entrance in there. Which I, I'm sure they could, but a 40-foot truck would be up over the curb and everything. They're not gonna be able to get underneath that canopy.
Perfect. Underground storage, storage tanks are located to the north side there. What is the capacity of those?
The, those tanks will probably, will have three tanks, will have diesel tank, it will have also two different tanks where they have different, that, that will have one tank that will be of a certain grade and then they'll have another tank that'll be divided up for the different E, you know, the ethanol and everything else. They are usually probably 30K to 15K.
Sure.
And they won't be the 40K tanks that we would have if this was more of a highway location.
Perfect. The other thing I guess is with come and go being a part of Maverick now, as you guys coexist. Will any of those ends that are located 335 yards away from come and go to Maverick here, will any of those be joined? Will those pools of storage tanks be combined and be linked together at any point?
We couldn't do that.
Yeah, and that's, just wanna make sure that's on the record that, yeah, that will never be done.
No, because we'd have to cross a number of private properties.
Understood, and again, it's always a question asked that seems to get by down the road later on. Sinclair is located to the north over there and that Sinclair, I think that thing's about 500 yards. What is the volume you would estimate that's gonna go into that Maverick? Who do you think are the individuals that are gonna be utilizing that station? Where are they coming from?
Uh, again, it would be what, what we call bypass traffic, majority of that, I would say 80 to 85% of the traffic that's already on that road. Will be coming in and utilizing this. Everything else would be somebody driving along the road, uh, maybe mainly the highway. And would see it and say, ah, I need something, I need gas or else I like the Maverick burrito or I like too soda or whatever. That, that would be a diverted traffic coming in at that point. And then you have somebody that just lives in the area here that just loves Mavericks. You know, we have a lot of customers that are that way.
Sure, so to the west, what is to the west over here in zone two or, uh, planning area two? What's respected over there on that, Jeff?
To the west, uh, those are commercial lots.
Okay, so the commercial lot goes up, I guess my question coming back to you, sir, is gonna be. As I travel north, heading on I-25, I hit Baptist, I don't have fuel. I don't see the sign, the height of that sign, is there gonna be any type of signs on I-25 that's gonna tell me a Mavericks up ahead?
We love billboards.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
And we do not create billboards, we will lease billboards.
Okay.
Okay, most likely, uh, as, as everybody knows, you'll have the group signs that'll say the different types of foods, different types of gas stations. We'll definitely get on those.
Okay, perfect. You would be the first one coming down, obviously from the south or coming from the north-south, the first gas station coming in. Obviously the service you provide, everything there for the local community as we keep growing here on Jackson Creek Parkway in 105. My question becomes this, on that area there, it's always gonna be a contentious issue from 105 to Jackson Creek Parkway. What's mitigation for snow or what mitigation, I guess. Does Maverick provide to help the public in that area? Other than, you know, it's a gas station or it's a convenience store?
That's a good question. We get that a lot, like what other amenities do we do for the community?
Yeah.
Asking. Uh, the amenities for the community, we operate 24/7. We have a number of employees, usually between 13 and 18 employees. They're all local, that's the one thing. Maverick provides full benefits in terms of medical, dental, uh, 401ks, things like that, your full-time, uh, W-2. Is it W-2W? I'm get the W-2W, W-2 employee on that. We also have, uh, cameras that monitor the site 24/7. So we, we work with local police. If any incidents should happen, say there was an accident somewhere that was out on, uh, Highway 5, uh, 105. We cooperate with the police department because we will have cameras on site and if you can see that, we would share that, that information. We also provide what we call safe places. So if somebody is in the area, they're hurt or, you know, somebody's following them, I don't, I can't see that happening here, but we get this in a lot of urban areas. You know, we are considered a safe place where, uh, they can come in and we will, we will call the police and, and help them in any way we can. The, the, we run into this a lot in the California market with homeless. That we will not have outdoor sockets where they can plug in their, their, their devices because that's an attractive, uh, point. We don't, uh, we don't have the hose bibs open where they can fill up with water. It sounds callous and it sounds like something, but we don't wanna create an attractive nuisance is what it comes down to. If we have to hire, I don't see this here, but in other markets, if we have to hire security, we hire security. If it comes down to that, we're, if we experience a lot of theft for, uh, alcohol, we will stop selling alcohol. We have a number of stores where we don't sell alcohol in, in urban areas because it, it just, Albuquerque's one, one particular market where we're very particular of whether we're gonna sell alcohol or not. Tobacco, the same thing.
Sure, great, thank you. Last question for you. Minimum wage, what is the wage for an employee to work here at Maverick? What is that rate, I guess, for an employee starting out Maverick, brand new store, getting fully vested across the board? What is that rate for that high school kid that's looking for a brand new job?
That is the first time I've ever been asked that and I really, I don't have that answer. But it's above what minimum wage would be, way above. It's 15 or more and, and we go by what market rate would be for this area for, for that age.
And, and the reason why I'm asking that is because again, behind the scenes, as we go further down the road and as monuments growing, I mean, most of the individuals within those rates. There's no way they're living within that 25% for housing.
Yes.
And unfortunately, the rent out here has gone through the roof, uh, to the point of one studio is averaging about 1,700 a month. So I mean, even if it's competitive associated with the rates that you're gonna provide for these individuals that are looking for jobs and they wanna be local. It may not even be a consideration.
That, that, that I understand, we experienced this all over.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate your time, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will go ahead and close Commissioner comments, questions, uh, unless we have any others that we'd like to discuss. Not on this side, not on this side. Thank you, folks. At this time, I request a motion to vote and if there are any specific wordings for any motions, I would go ahead and request those as well. I leave that to the commission.
Commissioner Oars. I move that the planning commission approve the ordinance in favor of preliminary final PUD plan for Maverick Monument Junction Lot 1. Monument Junction West filing number one.
A second, man.
Thank you, everyone. I'll now continue the vote parole call. So Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
We've already got Chair Oars.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
At this time, the motion passes six yes, zero no.
Perfect, thank you very much, sir. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and move right on to item number 3B. This is a request from Dobi Development Group LLC for preliminary slash final plat. Known as ZIL at Jackson Creek Preliminary Final Plat. With that, I pass this off to staff for presentation.
Thank you, Chair Trujillo. Uh, ZIL at Jackson Creek, this is a preliminary final plat application. Project context, the project site is located at the southeast corner of Higbee Road and Bowstring Road, east of Jackson Creek Parkway. This is the preliminary plat for record of the meeting. This is the slope study of the preliminary plat. Noticing that the majority, mass majority of the site is 10% or less in slope, very flat site. Final plat cover for record. The final plat by ZIL at Jackson Creek being proposed for today. Big components of this are, we have one lot, we have a drainage easement. We have a 20-foot electric easement that will be, is to be vacated through separate instrument. There's a proposed 25-foot utility easement to the north edge. A 10-foot utility easement to the east. And 20-foot utility easements along the south and west sides. Project request, resolution approving a preliminary final plat for ZIL at Jackson Creek. The unplatted parcel is 71000478. Project area is 21.1 acres. It's zoned PRD 10. So this is a straight zone in the town code, uh, through Regency Park overlay. Related application, there's a site plan that is under administrative review. Pending on the outcome of this. Proposed uses for, uh, the preliminary final plat. Single-family detached, residential attached, amenity center and clubhouse, community gardens, a dog park. Green courtyards, walking path, trails, wetland, preservation area. All of those proposed uses are tied to the site plan, not to this particular preliminary final plat. The section 1802 to 50 is the preliminary plat review approval criteria. This is it for record. We also have the final plat review approval criteria rec, for record. I'll point out that the plat needs to conform with the town's comprehensive plan, that's the very first criteria. And I'll note that the 10th, um, additional, uh, criteria is that the final plat is generally consistent with the preliminary plat as applicable. Uh, other than that, the review approval criteria for both preliminary and final are identical. So moving with that first criteria. We are reviewing of any land use applications, a two-step process. Step one, refining of the substantial compliance with the future land use map or flume. And step two, finding of consistency with the adopted policies of the comprehensive plan. Designated future land use is residential attached. Residential attached development types are defined as patio homes, duplexes, townhomes, garden apartments. Page 13 of the comprehensive plan, uh, regarding substantial compliance. Those reviewing new development applications should ensure that the location, the type and the attributes of the development are in keeping with the land use designation shown on the future land use map. Staff's findings is that the location, potential development type and the attributes are keeping with the flume's land use designation. Therefore, staff finds the proposed plat substantially compliant with the flume. Step two. Looking at, uh, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Community vision, four of the five are applicable. One is not applicable. Staff's finding is that the proposed preliminary final plat is consistent with the majority or more than 50% of the vision of the comprehensive plan. Regarding values, uh, there is one community value that does apply, the other three do not. Staff's findings is the proposed preliminary final plat is being more likely consistent instead of less likely consistent with the values of the comprehensive plan. Regarding viewpoints, uh, staff has found one applicable, uh, that viewpoint. Three of the viewpoints are not applicable. Fourth, in the fourth, the fifth is not applicable. Staff's finding is the proposed preliminary final plat being more likely consistent with, instead of less likely consistent with the viewpoints of the comprehensive plan. Strategic goals, staff finds that two of the three strategic goals do apply, uh, and one does not. The proposed preliminary final plat is consistent with the majority or more than 50% with the strategic goals of the comprehensive plan. Two of the seven elements do apply, the other five do not. Looking at land use opportunities, we have two that apply and we have, uh, an additional that do not apply. Of the policies of land use, there is a number that do apply. These for the record. Terms of transportation opportunities, there are those that apply and those that do not apply. Pointing out TRE and TRF, TRE adopts street standards that include sidewalks or paths. Ensure that the newly developed streets are both aesthetically pleasing and environmentally sensitive. TRF, work with the Public Works Department, PPACG, El Paso County and C-Dot to identify and prioritize transportation deficiencies and require future transportation improvements. Metro District, um, Tribe View is working on much of the improvements for Higbee Road and that's why that is asterisks here on the opportunities. Transportation policies, most of the policies do apply and with TR-2 and TR-3. TR-2, uh, this again applies with Tribe View Metro District and the activities they have going on with Higbee Road. TR-2, as development occurs, ensure that there are adequate turn lanes and capacity to serve developments with special attention to State Highway 105, which is maintaining, uh, C-Dot. TR-3, improve the connectivity of east-west arterial and collector roads. Moving on, transportation policies continued. TR-8, work with regional interests to establish a multimodal transportation system. Provides alternatives to the car and provides the disabled and elderly with safe options to reach area destinations. Again, that is also a part of ongoing conversations with Tribe View Metro District for Higbee Road. Staff's findings that the proposed preliminary final plat is consistent with the majority, more than 50% with the elements of the comprehensive plan. Existing zoning, so the site is PRD 10. This is again in the Regency Park overlay district of the town code. It is vacant land. North of it is RM 30 or, which is a zone within El Paso County. Woodmore Park Community, south of the site, we have PRD 6, a part of the Regency Park overlay. This is Jackson Creek North filing number three. To the east, we have a PRD 4, Regency Park overlay zone. Uh, this is Jackson Creek North filing number four. And to the west, we have, uh, PMD of the Regency Park overlay, which is vacant land. Project zoning history, uh, March 16th of 2015, Regency Park, uh, had its sixth amended development and rezoning plan, which was approved. Zoom in to the left, there is showing, uh, the PRD 10, uh, parcel areas of 33 and 34 that are applicable to this application. Regency Park 6, sorry, Regency Park 6th amended development and rezoning plan. The PRD zoning, uh, has these following land uses. Permitted uses include single-family dwelling and detached. two-family dwellings as well. Accessory uses, conditional uses are also listed. Traffic study. The traffic study for this anticipates 1,238 trips on the weekday. Traffic impacted letter by L S C Transportation Consultants approximates the proposed development for this plat is expected to generate the 1,200 vehicle trips on the average weekday with about half entering and half exiting the site during a 24-hour period. A LOC or better is anticipated through 2048. The intersections of Higbee and Bowstring and Strata and Bowstring are planned to be constructed as modern roundabouts. All approaches to these intersections are projected to operate at a satisfactory level of service through 2043. A traffic signal is warranted. Intersection of Jackson Creek and Strata may meet eight-hour and/or four-hour vehicular volume. Traffic signal warrants with build-out of the proposed development. It will require additional monitoring in the short term as development comes online. Just looking here at the final plat, we do have one item to discuss, which is the 25-foot utility easement proposed on the north side of the site. Why this is an outstanding item? The question at play, and there's a series of questions here. Does the plat application need to accommodate more right-of-way for Higbee Road? Existence can be road right of way is 70 feet. The proposed utility easement along Higbee Road is 25 feet. That was the highlighted area that I just showed you. It's located in Tri-View's Metro District Service Area. Tri-View and the town have an I G A agreement that speaks to how the future design and build-out of Higbee Road should play out and whose roles are associated with that. Tri-View is designing for a 70-foot right-of-way plus a 25-foot utility easement. Tri-View roadway design is within, is anticipating a 95-foot width. Roundabouts on Higbee Road are proposed at Lewis Palmer High School parking lot and the Bowstring intersection. We do have a letter of support from District 38, from Dr. Casey Summers, the superintendent from 11, 6, 20, 23, supporting that roundabout at the high school parking lot. The continuing questions that come out are, is 95 feet of width enough for Higbee Road? Higbee Road is, was annexed to the town in 2021. The town does not have a current road classification plan. The town only has an H U T F functional classification on record with the town, and that states that Higbee Road is to be a minor arterial. It is of note that H U T F is structured for funding. So largest possible classifications are usually targeted in those efforts so they can acquire funding. So it doesn't necessarily mean that what the classification is being asked for is what's necessarily needed. The county master plan currently classifies Higbee Road as a major collector. However, the county futures 2040, 2060 classification for Higbee Road is a minor arterial. Jackson Creek Regional Trail is another item of note that is tentatively envisioned possibly along Higbee Road. And so providing essentially an eight-foot trail would be something that needs to be accommodated within whatever right-of-way is provided for Higbee Road. The subsequent question that carries forward from there, should Higbee Road be a major collector or should it be a minor arterial? Town of Monument roadway design and technical criteria manual 2010 states that a minor arterial shall be a minimum of 125, 120 feet. That would accommodate four travel lanes, 12 feet wide, plus a median. Bike lanes were required with a five-foot, that are five feet wide, and detached sidewalks are required that are five feet wide in that minor arterial 125, 120-foot right-of-way section. A major collector, if if determined, it would require a minimum of 90 feet. That would accommodate four travel lanes, 12 feet wide, plus a center turn lane, 12 feet wide. Bike lanes requiring five feet wide and detached sidewalks requiring five feet wide. So the big question is what is needed along Higbee Road for adequate mobility needs? Four lanes of traffic, sidewalks on both sides attached, or should they be detached? A median, bike lanes, regional trail. Some have even brought up the question of equestrian mobility. Well, we could, we do have Tri-View here, who will be speaking about Higbee Road here momentarily. We'll move on with just approve, looking at the other items for review with the preliminary final plat. Just going to go through those, and then we can move forward with the applicant and with Tri-View. Looking at wildlife for the application. There's no critical wildlife habitats identified on the site. Grasslands within the project site do provide habitat for birds. So nest surveys to be completed within seven days prior to construction have been requested. Wildfire. There's a low at-risk rating for wildfires in the area. Wetland. An emergent wetland extends into the site's southwestern region. A section 404 permit authorizes and recognizes the area. The 404 permit does not specify any mitigation areas within the site that are needed. No further USA CE actions or coordinations are required to comply with that 404 permit. In terms of geo-hazard, no below-grade levels are planned for the proposed development. Groundwater was encountered seven to 13 feet below ground surface. Mitigation measures and foundation strategies are provided in the geo-hazard and geotech report for this. Utilities. Will serve letters are provided for Tri-View and for Mountain View Electric. Public improvements. Public site improvement agreement is to be determined during the site plan application review process per section 1802 to 410, so it's not applicable for the preliminary final plat. Drainage basin. T Chalk Creek drains, the drainage for this is generally to the west on the site. Preliminary final drainage report for Jackson Creek North filing number three through six was prepared and is from May 14th to 2021. That's the sighting of what this is coming from. Basin OC, OSC six is designed to discharge into an existing pond, Pond C, which is modeled, assuming basin OC, OSC six as urban commercial. And it anticipated an 85% imperviousness for the site, which is not what will be, will be happening with this plat. Park dedication is not applicable. Tri-View Metro District versus responsible for the park requirements. School dedication is not applicable. School dedication requirements for the Regency Park are fulfilled. El Paso County District Court case number 04C V 3244, El Paso County School District number 38 plaintiff versus Jackson Creek Land Development Company et al, defendants. Public notice. Published in the Gazette on the 24th of October, posted on the property at 24th of October, mailed to owners within 500 feet, 24th of October. No letters of opposition were received, but we did receive a letter of support, as I mentioned earlier, from the school district about Higbee Road and the roundabout. Not necessarily associated with this application. Section 1802 to 50, the preliminary plat review approval criteria. It appears that all of these criteria have been met. 1802 to 60, final plat review approval criteria. It appears all of these have been met. Staff's findings are that the application is consistent with all applicable development standards. The application is adequately addresses criteria of Title 18 Town L D C, sections 1802 to 50 and 260. The application conforms with the town's comprehensive plan. The only outstanding question is, does this plat application need to accommodate more right-of-way for Higbee Road? As as stated, we do have the applicant here. We also have representatives of Tri-View here to speak to the ongoing conversation with Higbee Road.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, applicant, do you have a presentation or anything that you'd like to add to the current presentation that the staff had already given? Please.
Hi, my name's Jim Dobie with Dobie Development Group, and and ZIL is my company. And thank you all for giving me some time to present tonight. Thank you, Jeff and Ray, for all your help to get to this, to this point. This is, this is pretty exciting. So as soon as you get the presentation up, Jeff, that'd be great. Sure. Yeah, so I'll just start off. So ZIL for Living, I started this company a couple of years ago, and the really the inspiration for the company was watching a friend of mine, and he, he was living in a, in a subdivision, working pretty hard. You know, there's nothing, nothing special about the subdivision. And he really was very introverted, not, not doing a lot, just going to work every day, coming home and spending nights at his house, and his, and his health was, you know, deteriorating. And then by moving to a new home with a very active homeowners association with amenities over a period of seven years, his health really improved. You know, his, his quote to me is, he was healthier and happier than ever by living in this neighborhood. And that's when it really dawned on me what a neighborhood can do for your, your health and wellness. He was playing pickleball. He had bridge buddies, and he had, he had a real community all of a sudden where he didn't have that before. And, and so that was really the inspiration of these, of these wellness living communities that, that I'm working on. My, my partner for this is a, the largest healthcare REIT in the U.S. called Welltower. And they own a lot of assisted living, senior living projects across the country. Now, this is not senior living, but it's inspired by a lot of the services they give at those, at those communities. Jeff, do you know if we'll be able to watch the video? It should be on the next slide. If you click on that, I don't know if it'll go through or not. Okay. Yeah, that's all right. So just moving on then. Yeah, we can move forward. Yep. So the, the foundation of our, of our communities and of our company is based on our four pillars of wellness. Connect, move, nourish, and dwell. And so that really inspires everything that we do in, in the communities that we, that we build. Next slide, please. And then moving on, you, the, in the dwell component, you know, this, this gives you a little, little feel of our, of our homes. This one is a duplex, so people have a lot of light coming in the sides of the building. Little, little private, private open space, little front yard. We can have some side yard. Some of the, some of the units also have a backyard for, for the residents to have their, their space. And moving on. Moving into the, the, the move and the, and the connect pillars. All of our communities have some, some open space that's, that we try to activate and really create an area where people can move and connect, and really to help them enhance their, their physical health and, and work with their, work with their neighbors and get to know their neighbors. And so in, in this one, you can see there's some covered space, you know, some covered unheated space, some nice manicured green lawns. We actually use, we, we've started using a lot of artificial turf. This takes less water. It's easier to maintain. It's easier and it, and it looks good and is well-received. I'll keep moving on, please. And then moving into this slide, the, the, the important part on this one is, is you can see the, the green space, the mews between the homes. And that's, that's where people can connect. And in a community of this size, you're not going to know everybody by their first name, but, but will you know your neighbor's first name? We hope so. And, and that's where we want to create these small villages within the community. So you really get to know people by their first name, and you have a place to gather outside your home. You can go, go to a little fireplace. You can go sit outside and somewhere at a rondack chairs. But really get to know your neighbors and, and get to, and really be part of something. People love to be part of something, be part of, part of the community and part of a relationship. And that's where this happens on our communities. Next is, is nourish. Nourish is one of our pillars, and we talk about nourishing the mind, body, and soul. So we have, one of our signature elements is just a little greenhouse and some raised garden beds. The raised garden beds really aren't there to grow food for the community. It's really a place for the community to come together and to learn. We're working on a project in Texas where we, where we've partnered with a local college, and, and they bring in a farmer to help teach the people how to use the raised beds. So, you know, and then we usually have a couple of community beds there, and if we can grow some mint, you know, who doesn't like a fresh mojito? And so why, why does this matter to Monument? Well, you know, I think we're, we're creating something special, and, and when we looked around and we, and we landed on, on Monument, we, we really like the connection to all of the amenities in the area, really the, the, the natural amenities in the area. So people can hike and bike. We're, we're close to a lot of trails, and so we think, we think that's perfect for, for our resident, and it's going to really make one plus one equal three. We, we like to think that, you know, there's some economic benefits because, you know, people that are a little bit, you know, feeling a little bit better. They're a little healthier. Maybe they don't tax your public systems quite so heavily. Maybe their, maybe their first line of defense is their community, the, the people in the neighborhood that they've already, you know, met and become friends with to help each other out in a time of need. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an exciting project for us, and we're, we're really happy to be here. It's taken us a lot of work to get to this point, and so we appreciate your time tonight and, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, sir. Jeff, Tri-View, do we want to have them come up and talk about Higbee or?
We could either do that now or as questions unfold. They're happy to come and answer questions, however they'd like to do that.
I'd leave it to Tri-View. Yeah, please come on up, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Jim McGrady. I'm the district manager for Tri-View Metropolitan District. And just by background, Higbee Road has always been kind of a, a different road. It was in the county for a very long time, forever, as a matter of fact. And recently, in 2021, we decided that it needed to be brought into the town of Monument. So there was a very long process that I, I actually have about 1,000 emails in my email box as it related to wrestling Higbee Road out of the county and into the town of Monument. And the town was able to annex Higbee Road into the town. And because of our 1987 agreement, Tri-View agreed to maintain Higbee Road going forward. So now we're out there plowing the snow and so forth. One of the things that came up, however, was the fact that Higbee Road needed to be widened. And we've been working on that widening now for the better part of two years, trying to come up with a plan that, that works. It's a complicated road, number one. The first thing you need to know is there's a power line that goes along the south side. And that has to be undergrounded. So this, this plan that we're putting together has to think about, how do you underground that power line? As was mentioned, there has to be a trail that goes through. So we've been looking at how can you integrate a trail with the power line? Because when you underground a power line, you end up with these large boxes that, they're pole boxes actually, and you end up having to kind of snake your, your trail through there. So the question on the south side anyway is what type of sidewalk do we have? Well, we have an eight-foot sidewalk that kind of goes through there and it provides areas to set the boxes so that the mountain view can install the electric that they need to install. We also have a 16-inch water line that has to go in there. That's part of our Northern Delivery System project. So we've got the pipeline built into Jackson Creek six, actually. And then we'll be, of course, running that water line. In fact, the water lines are already installed through Jackson Creek's three, three through six. That all culminates and needs to be fed into a 16-inch pipeline that runs from Bowstring to Jackson Creek Parkway. So there's a segment of 16-inch pipe has to go in there. We also have stormwater to, to contend with. A lot of that stormwater comes off of the, the townhomes and apartments that are kind of to the northeast of the site. So we have to deal with that as well. So all, all said, it's very complicated and Higbee Road is, is one of those roads that, um, has needed to be improved for a very long time. I want to caution everybody on the commission, however, to realize that it isn't an expensive proposition to build this road. We are doing our best to try to fund this road. And we're doing our best to try to come up with creative financing mechanisms that allow this road to be widened. And, uh, clearly zeal for living is one of those, those developments that in my mind is, is a wonderful development. But it's also provides tap fees, park and open space fees, road and bridge fees. Those are all fees that we can use to help improve the, um, uh, the Higbee Road. So that's, uh, that's a very important concept and, uh, one that I, I just can't stress enough. If this is, this is an expensive road and we need to, we need to have all of our financial tools in a, in a row. And, um, with that said, I've got two gentlemen here from, um, Kimley Horn. We have Sean Hayes and Tyler Luffler. Okay. I always wanted to make sure, uh, it is. And, uh, so Sean and, uh, Tyler are here to answer questions about the design. Like I say, we've been working at this for about two years. I think we've got a really good design that meets everybody's needs. As you see, we've got a, um, letter from, uh, Dr. Summers. We've been working with the school district now for close to a year, trying to come up with a plan that's going to make their situation much better. And, uh, I think we've finally done that. And, um, you know, with that said, um, we're here to answer any questions. Uh, we, Sean's got information about roundabouts. He's got information about cross sections of the road, how the whole thing looks. Happy to answer those questions as we go along.
Perfect. Thank you very much, sir. We're going to go ahead and get started with public comments.
This will be a public hearing.
Our public hearing, I'm sorry. Yeah. But public hearing, if the public has any comments, uh, we'll give you the opportunity to answer those questions when we get to the applicant rebuttal. If they choose to have any questions directly for Tribe View. Uh, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open public hearing. Uh, in this case, those individuals that have any public comments in the room here. I would ask for you to come on up, go ahead and leave your name and address on the podium. If we have none, uh, Ray, I'm going to ask for those individuals that are online, please. Uh, we'll give it about 30 seconds. I defer to you, Ray.
At this time, I'm not seeing anyone online in the chat raising their hand or typing a message for us. So I'm going to go with no.
All right. We'll give them about five more minutes, seconds-ish. I almost said minutes. All right. At this point, we are going to close public hearing and we're going to go ahead and open it for Commissioners. And with that, Commissioner Green, please, ma'am.
I didn't see in the presentation or I don't think my packet, what is the density of the project?
So this application tonight is for preliminary final plat.
I understand that.
And so the use that's being suggested is not a part, not applicable to the conversation.
Well, um, I understand that this is one lot. And so on a PRD 10, we would probably normally think about it as a, one piece of land with an apartment building on it. But we are now looking at one lot with single family and multifamily homes on it. Um.
That's not necessarily determined yet.
Oh.
There's been a presentation of a proposed concept. But this meeting is for a preliminary final plat presentation for one lot. And with the necessary easements that are associated with it.
I, I still don't understand how we approve a subdivision that could possibly, I mean, I, I, I don't understand this project. Is everything rented then? Nobody ever owns anything. So this would not have to be subdivided into lots if people are going to live there. I.
Would the applicant like to speak to that question about rent or what the?
The only way this works with one lot is if everything is rented and nothing is bought or sold. Because you cannot buy or sell unless you subdivide.
So once again, uh, Jim Dobie was zeal for living. And, and yes, this is a, a rental community. And, um, and so typically the, um, the homes are one and, one and two story homes. A lot of the homes will have a primary bedroom on the ground floor, um, just to avoid a lot of stair travel. And then professionally managed, uh, to curate that environment of health and wellness. You know, there's the, um, the Jackson Creek Senior Center that's, uh, just adjacent to this, which is, you know, much more, uh, dense than this. But, uh, that's also professionally managed community with a lot of, a lot of wellness aspects to it.
Okay. So you will not go above the density of 10 dwelling units per acre?
Well, correct. We're.
That's what you're limited to?
Yes, correct.
Do you? I, I guess where I'm going with this, I, I've needed some background information first. Let's say you build it as you have envisioned. And, um, during that period, you realize, hey, people really want to come live here. We're full. We've got a waiting list. But nobody's really using the greenhouses. So we're going to tear them down and build more houses because that's where the need is. Is this being, is this going to be monitored? I mean, are we going to, are you going to know when it's over 10 dwelling units per acre? And when you might have to subdivide or rezone, I, I, it, it's not the wellness portion. I understand the community. I'm having a hard time with this type of community being on one subdivided piece of land.
So the applicant of the subdivision is here, uh, if they want to speak. As, as stated, this is a preliminary final plat for one lot of land that is already zoned for PRD 10.
Correct. And we will never see this again. Though, and we're not sure what's being placed there.
So what staff will do is there will be a site plan application. That site plan application by code is reviewed administratively. It'll be reviewed based on the PRD 10, um, zoning code and design standards. And it will need to meet that. If it doesn't meet that, staff will need to work with the applicant to either approve or not approve or approve with conditions. But that's not what's being discussed tonight. What's being discussed tonight is the preliminary final plat.
Yeah, I understand. And, and so if, um, if this is built and it, it becomes popular enough to where people want to buy their homes, uh, it will come back for re-subdiving?
Those things are possible.
Anything without subdividing it.
And if it does, it'll have to go through the review process for that. But right now we're not looking at that.
Okay. It's, that's a little odd, but, um, my other question about Higbee is are we being asked to decide something here? Are we being asked to decide what we think that right of way should be? But is, is there something you're asking of the planning commission? I'm hearing here is some options. Do you want us to, um, decide that and put it in a motion or is, are we just talking about this?
It's ra, the, the plat is, this is a, this is a preliminary final plat that's being asked to be approved as it's currently presented. It's currently presented the idea of a 25 foot utility easement on the south side to expand the Higbee right of way with that easement from 70 feet to 95 feet. Staff is merely giving findings stating that that width is narrower than a minor, a, a major arterial.
Right.
But it's a question of whether or not it is supposed to be a major arterial or not. Staff's finding shows that future development of the area through county maps shows that it will be identified as a major arterial. If that's what needs to be accounted for, for future development, code states that a major arterial minimum is 120 feet. And so what the plat that's being presented right now shows doesn't account for that.
With 120 feet?
The 120 feet.
So, so you're asking us as a part of this preliminary final subdivision, do we, can we increase that right of way to 120 feet?
It's a question for you to ask yourselves of whether or not what's being worked out through Tribe View Metro District. If that is accounted for. What's unfortunate is the applicant is a, is a, is a bystander in that issue.
Yeah, right.
They have, they have a preliminary final plat that they're trying to get approved. And there's a right of way question that is bigger than their application that's holding them up from moving forward.
Would this be a condition of the subdivision?
It could be something that is offered as a condition of approval.
Something that could be a condition, the subdivision. In addition to that, um, does the town determine how much the adjacent property owner participates in the construction of Higbee? This is not a planning commission question, is it, to say, uh, you know, what have we said? Okay. We, we approved this subdivision with the condition that we want to see right of way for 120 feet. And we want the applicant to participate financially by, and are we going to that detail?
No. All we're, all we're doing here, uh, Commissioner Green, is we want to make sure that the appropriate amount of land allocated for right of way is captured in this plat. If Commissioners feel that's something that you think needs to be accounted for when the town council looks to approve this or make the motion, whatever motion they make.
Okay.
Okay.
And so I'm.
It is also, I want to also reiterate to your earlier question. This is a roadway that is in Tribe View Metro District.
Right.
We have an IGA with Tribe View Metro District that gives them the authority to make decisions about construction and design about Higbee Road. That also states that needs to take into consideration town code and town standards.
Right.
And so we have a complexity here of a proposed roadway that is less wide than a minor arterial that states a minimum right of way of 120 feet in code.
So you're saying right now it's a major collector. You're looking at a minor arterial, but the county was projecting it would be a major arterial.
It was, it was seeing it as a, as a minor arterial in the 2060 plan that it has for the county. The issue here we also have is that the northern side of Higbee Road is fully built out. You cannot ask for more right of way going north with Higbee Road. So the only way you're going to accommodate the right of way necessary for minor arterial is, is going to come from the south side of the corridor and that right of way.
Then for Tribe View, can a 90 foot right of way contain burying the electric lines? The bike, trail, the sidewalk and the boxes and, and the water? It, the 90 foot can contain all of that.
So, uh, Sean Hayes, Kimley Horn, we've been working with the Metro District on the design of this road. Currently within the 95 feet that is available, we are providing two lanes of travel in both directions. A attached five foot sidewalk on the north side of Higbee. A detached eight foot sidewalk on the south side of Higbee that serves as a multi-use trail. Um, and we are accommodating the utilities, both the electric and the, uh, water that Jim was mentioning.
And would there be, forgetting what the county may be projecting, would there be an advantage, do you feel, of having 120 foot major arterial right of way?
Uh, in my opinion, there, there's not an advantage to additional right of way as we currently are fitting everything within the right minutes available.
Thanks. Sorry it took so long. I'm done.
I guess the question is though, is this the only portion of Higbee Road where we're having that discussion about the right of way? Because obviously Higbee Road goes further to the west and to the east. So where do we look future?
So the, the segment of Higbee Road that the Metro District currently is looking at with their design plans goes from Jackson Creek Parkway on the west end to, uh, Harness on the east end. So it's, it's about a mile, um, and it pretty much covers the limits of Tribe View Metro District. The town ends kind of at the eastern limit of the project and the road becomes the counties. Um, and as far as we're aware, no, no planning or design is being worked on to the east.
And so in the future, should that come before the town, we'd be asking for addition, for the 95 foot right of way of, along Higbee for those, that development as well?
I think one way of putting that Commissioner Egley is we have not developed on the south side of Higbee Road. This is the beginning of that. And if you need the growth to be of a certain level, now is the time to make that ask. Because that will then impact additional development will be coming down the road.
Got it. Okay. Think about what's east of here. You've got Home Place Ranch and that Home Place Ranch, there's a, a one section of Home Place Ranch that kind of falls off a cliff, but what does it go into? It goes into Mouse Sabotage. So it's very difficult to envision a 120 foot wide road going from here out to basically the end of, uh, Higbee Road. Because of there's existing subdivisions along there. You've got all of Colonial Park. You've got Home Place Ranch that drops off, uh, into wetlands. So where, the way we've looked at this is that first mile, that's really where your urban development occurs. After that, it's, it's definitely rural. If you're familiar with Higbee, you go up through there and there's kind of a goofy little curve in there. The reason that's in there is because it's solid rock. And it's, there's lots and lots of pine trees. So what we envision as you go beyond this is you get back to more of a two lane road with bike paths on either side. And you just simply cannot, I mean, the, the, the traffic that you're going to see coming in from the east is, I don't know where it would come from because you've got large lots out there. You've got, um, five acre lots. You've got 35 acre lots out there. You've got a lot of large, large lots. And there's just, quite frankly, as that road falls off, there's no way to really effectively widen that. And, um, I think it becomes a matter of cost. And as was stated, you can't get the right away from the north side because it's all fully developed. And the south side is very difficult construction. And the south side is very difficult construction, like I say, Mouse Sabotage.
Yeah, please, sir. Commissioner Oars, okay. You're not envisioning that Promontory Point and Sanctuary Point traffic is going to be going down Glen Eagle onto Higbee Road? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, I, I, that's, that's not true. I, I do envision that some portion of that traffic coming out to Higbee Road. But the design that we've come up with can handle that traffic that comes from there.
The additional 300 lot, pro- pieces of property that Home Place Ranch wants to get in and above and beyond what they've already got approved?
They've got, they've got about 300 lots approved.
And they're going to ask for 300 more?
No, no, no. I, I think the additional lots that they're looking at is about 150.
Nope, that's not what we heard. No, no. Their, their initial request was for 600 units.
That's right.
And, and we approved 300, the council did.
They did.
And they're going to come back in and ask for 300.
Yep. Find it very difficult to try to figure out how in the world are they going to build those additional houses, given the constraints of the wetlands and what have you? So that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, well, but let's say if they do, what's that going to do to Higbee Road?
I will ask Sean to, because that's part of our traffic.
Please, please.
Uh, so the traffic studies that Higbee Road's based upon generally show an ADT of about 9,000 vehicles in the 2040 build-out year, counting for both the known development and then background growth based upon some county models. That 9,000 ADT is something that can be accommodated with the design of Higbee Road. You know, from a traffic engineering perspective, you know, one lane at 35 miles per hour doesn't equate to a specific volume. There's uh, some context that affects that. But in general, if you look at particularly the county standards, a two-lane roadway with turn lanes where appropriate, designed for 35 miles per hour can accommodate somewhere between 10 and 20,000 ADT, which is in line with the projections of the traffic studies that supported the Higbee design.
Are you saying even if they came back in with the additional 300 and were approved, that's a process in itself alone?
Yes.
It, it could still handle.
In general, uh, the, the traffic projections should accommodate something like that unless there is something that is uh, multiple developments at much higher densities than the county's models project, which, which may occur, but that would be looking in a magic crystal ball that I don't have.
I have another question. If additional right-of-way is not placed on this applicant for their plat request, and if at some future date that goes beyond what you and I can see today and the gentleman back there can see today, we really need more right-of-way. Can we get all that right-of-way up above there and below there, but we could be locked in then to the right-of-way that this plat is going to approve?
If in the future additional right-of-way acquisition is needed, then that's always an, an option. Uh, I've worked on lots of projects with lots of agencies where we have acquired property. And if in 2060, it's determined that Higbee needs additional right-of-way in this segment or others, that there's a process to go acquire that right-of-way that we could follow. But for our design year through 2040, we don't project a need for additional right-of-way.
Yeah, but we acquire not right-of-way after people build on it, it becomes very expensive. That makes that roadway a lot more expensive than what it makes it right now, so, okay. Okay, that, that's all the questions I got on that at this moment.
I, I'm curious about, uh, looking at this from a safety standpoint. So there's a school right there. Why wouldn't we pursue 120 feet now? Well, it's, the opportunity is in front of us. Is, is it because it's so complicated? Because I, I hear a lot about it's complicated, but it could be more complicated, so.
I, I guess from a safety perspective, I don't know that there would be a benefit to acquiring additional right-of-way from a safety perspective. There is multi-use path on the south side of the project limits, which would allow pedestrians a, a route to access the school if, if they're coming out of the development to the south. Um, and then there's an additional, additionally, there's a sidewalk on the north side for those, to serve those developments.
Got you, got you. Okay. No, thank you, thank you.
So is the developer opposed to giving this additional right-of-way up?
Good evening, Rob Oldak with Jackson Creek Land Company. Again, complexity. We're talking about a segment here where you commissioners or someone, city council would want to, uh, I guess refute the engineering that Tribeview did and imposed a 120-feet requirement. Could kind of have a snowball effect. Don't know what that means for other developments. Several years ago, we sold land to Eagle Development that developed the filings three through six of Jackson Creek North, as you may be aware, and that doesn't have 120 feet. So it's sort of like, where do you stop? You know, you're going to start down the road of saying, well, their engineering isn't good enough, then not sure, you know, where, where to stop that. Similarly, with the dates that you're talking about. We see 2040 being a standard that seems to be applied for many traffic studies, including one tonight. And yet, these engineers having met that 2040 standard are asked to be looking like beyond that to eventualities that we can't even, you know, predict as far as what could happen. So, yes, I would say, well, we would have difficulty acquiescing to that, just sort of not understanding, you know, where we're going. We start, you know, ignoring the engineering and, and just assigning a 120 feet. If I may continue, uh, just for a moment, the, the, the county on that 2040 to 2060 study, they did say that that is a minor arterial, but I believe it's a rural minor arterial 100 feet. So perhaps you might check that. I think that's a standard that needs to be considered if, if Kimley Horn's engineering isn't going to be acceptable, uh, we could look a little more deeply into what the county's saying. That's all I have.
Just to answer the question, would you concede standing until 125?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, what?
The question was 20, 120.
Would you not want to give up that extra lane?
Well, before I, I've qualified it slightly again, before I would do that, I would also look to the fact that there's a 25-foot easement on the north side of Higbee uh, that we haven't talked about yet. That's it. That's an access and utility easement on the north side fro- from those owners. That's a, is that the Walters Development or part of the Walters? And, and that's not entirely from our property, no. Not when there's 25 feet on the other side.
Yep, no, no. And that's exactly what we're looking for, just whether or not it's an answer. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to, for the record, not refuting what the engineers are saying at all, what we're looking at is code.
Understood.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oars, I have a question for the staff. Based on all, everything I'm hearing here, why was this even begging the question from us on the 120 feet?
Uh, staff was instructed to allow for planning commission and town council to make the decision on whether or not the 95 feet proposed is adequate or if it needs to meet the 120-foot minimum per code.
And but was a rationale for why we're, and the council's being asked to make that decision rather than that decision being made in the putting together? I'm just a little confused of why the question was begged based on everything I'm hearing from everybody.
Understood. Staff can't speak to any particular reasoning on it. Staff knows that the direction given to them is we are to provide findings. And we are asked to give it to planning commission and town council to make decision.
Back off of that for a minute, I guess, I got, no, no, please, okay. How many communities do we have? Because it seems to me that we're, when it comes time to this plat, we're also being asked to recommend approval of a concept. How many rental communities do we have in Monument?
Right now, we're not, you're not being asked to recommend an approval of a concept.
Well, I think we are because if we approve the plat, we're approving rentals, rental units to be in a residential area that is single-family homes and other homes. And I don't know that our community wants a rental community in their single-family home areas. So I think we are being asked to approve a concept.
The, the PRD 10 zoning, which is associated with this, does accommodate for rental properties. It accommodates for many other land uses too. I can bring that slide back up to you. That will be an item that's applicable to the site plan that comes for, for approval. So this is not, this is not a recommendation or approval for a rental community is for a preliminary final plat that happens to be one lot.
But, but the planning commission and the council has no say once this plat is approved.
The zoning code that's been put in place was where the council had the say in what can be what it is. And that zoning is in code and is what's being enforced. And it's what's being asked of by the applicant to stick to that zoning. PRD 10 zoning that's in place, straight zone.
But I, I, I think what Commissioner Oars is saying is the zoning would be the same in this area if it were to be subdivided and sold into small, single-family home or duplexes.
Currently, the landowner
The zoning would be the same.
Right. Currently, the landowner chooses to move forward with this proposal of this type of lot subdivision for sale. And I will let the developer speak to that.
Well, I, and, and he, he did, but I, you know, we're so basically we're voting on a subdivision of one lot that we are guaranteed because of zoning that the density will not go beyond 10 dwelling units per acre.
That's a zoning question that you're asking.
It is the zoning, that's what it's zoned.
The zoning is in, the zoning isn't in question tonight.
Right.
But if approved, that's, that's, that's the question that we're having a hard time on the panel with. Once approved, it becomes an administrative action. That's what we don't want.
That is why there is straight zones, so that staff can move forward and help move developments forward that are straight zoned, so that you don't have to have oversight and initial, and additional review by planning commission and town council. This is a part of the process. It's a straight zone PRD 10.
If, if such a plat is approved, do we have, does such a, do they have a right for this plat to be approved?
The zoning is already in place. The, the rights of the zoning development are there. So if the applicant wants to move forward with something that meets the PRD 10 zoning, and it happens to be the concept that you saw tonight, staff will go through the PRD 10 review of the zoning and ensure that whatever's being presup- presented meets code.
It, I think it's unusual for this board because they're used to 20 acres of land when they come to subdivision, seeing it broken up into individual lots or lots for duplexes. So this is a little, a little bit different. And it doesn't have to be this way. It could be broken up into lots as long as the area doesn't exceed 10 dwelling units per acre.
One could say that if an applicant came forward to you and provided you with a preliminary final plat to subdivide down to densities and that it's reflected in lot sizes, they may find that they'd rather you've leave, you've lost the opportunity then for consolidation of that, the, the landowner and buyer from being able to use what all is potentially available in the PRD 10 zoning.
Yeah, unless, unless they want to sell anything. They cannot sell anything as it, as
They could sell it to a developer that then decides that they want to do the subdivision as you'd like, and they would come in for a replat.
It would come in for a replat. And you're going to watch this, so if the density goes beyond the density of the zoning, for example, what I asked earlier, if this is not working out well and they would rather tear down greenhouses and build more houses, you're going to be on top of that and you're going to know if that density exceeds 10 per acre and it's going to have to, I guess, come in for rezoning.
It'll have to, because they're going to have to get permits to get that torn down and rebuilt. And that's going to trigger everything up the str- up the stream of review.
Okay, and, and this project Okay, it, it's, yeah. It's different.
Multi-family dwelling, tell me how many, how many units can go into a multifamily, family dwelling? How many units?
Are you asking on a zoning code level?
On a zoning code level, yes, sir.
Okay, so let's look up, give me a second, I'll look at PRD 10.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just want to know what those limits are associated with what is identified as a multifamily dwelling. As I look at this, and the reason why is you're looking that up, everything in here is permitted uses, childcare center, large and small, got it, religious, assembly goods, schools, golf course, open space, park, group home, eight or fewer, family care home, yep, manufactured housing, got it. Multifamily dwelling, that leaves a loaded gun. We had this happen already with a couple of apartment buildings right here on Jackson Creek alone. So it becomes a slippery slope, and that's where it becomes, I understand ZIL and their, their presentation, it all looks great. But that buyer falls out and now we've got another multifamily dwelling that includes well over 600 units of apartment buildings.
So for PRD 10 zoning, Chair, maximum density for PRD 10 is 10 dwelling units per acre.
Is there a height restriction associated with that?
Maximum building height would be 35 feet.
Perfect. 20 acres.
That's 200 units?
200 units.
Maximum lot coverage for the PRD 10 is 40%.
Meaning, okay, what does that do to the total amount of units that could be?
That's a math question that has to be resolved at site plan. That's a math question that has to be resolved at site plan level.
So at forty percent, we're still talking at sixty, roughly sixty to eighty, hundred would be fifty percent.
Again, this is a question about a preliminary final plat tonight, is not a question about zoning. The zoning is already in place. You're beginning to ask questions at a site plan level, and this is about the plat.
Okay. Help me. If we approve a plat, then whatever goes on that plat, the community's got to live with. Now, under what conditions could we disapprove this plat? If we have concerns with a rental unit, rental units in a single family dwelling? We have concerns about the, the right of way? I mean, we're not here just to approve a plat because it says that they want a plat, are we?
So tonight, you are, you're planning commissions, you're recommending.
I understand we're recommending.
And the, it is about a preliminary file plat. If you're asking questions that have to do with land use, it's not applicable to the application. If you feel so inclined, you certainly can provide a condition that speaks to land use. But I don't know that it will be supported from a legal code standpoint, because we're talking about a plat right now. We're not talking about zoning.
I, but there are things.
That are, yeah.
If, if this were being subdivided to be sold and there were, we were seeing this same piece of land with, you know, a hundred lots on it, we would be looking at circulation, we'd be looking at roads, we're not, we're not, there are many activities going on in this, this twenty acres, and we're not seeing it.
But the zoning is there.
I understand the zoning is there. Are, are we not then, are there not, there will be no public roads? Will there be circulation within this one lot?
That's yet to be determined because there hasn't been a site plan to, to review yet, but we can't review that until we have the plat.
So what we are able to do under this zone is say yes or no to a one lot subdivision. And we know that there will be certain setbacks that have to be adhered to. They can't build right on the property line, whatever they're building. We can't make a determination about circulation or parking and.
Here's another way.
You know, we can't look at the density and say anything about the density either. I mean, we, we, we really get more information when we're doing Euclidean zoning for a McDonald's.
Right. Again, we're not talking about zoning tonight, talking about a subdivision plat. This is currently an unplatted piece of land. So another way to look at this is that the applicant is merely trying to make this a platted parcel at its simplest form. And that simplest form in accommodating to what the overlaying zoning allows.
Even when we're looking at shopping centers, which are often on one subdivision, one subdivided piece of land, we see the shopping center. We see where you can go in and out of it for a subdivision.
I'm not understanding the shopping center question because this, one thing, a shopping center is not a permitted use.
No, I'm, I'm talking about a shopping center is on one piece of subdivided property. And normally, if that were to come in front of the planning commission, we would see this one piece of property that's being subdivided out, but we would also see there's a shopping center here and some, you know, how you get in and out of it.
Right, you're asking for access points. That would happen at a sketch plat level, maybe. We're looking at a preliminary final plat or a single lot that is zoned PRD ten. And that lot is to be zoned and to plat the land so that it could be sold and then possibly be developed based on the PRD ten zoning.
As a one lot.
As a one lot.
One lot.
Right, but remember, the one lot is the simplest form of the plat that can be accomplished on this piece of land to give whoever wants to buy that land to develop and do what they want to do with it based on PRD ten zoning. If we were to go and subdivide it by densities, you're, the, the applicant would be driving a particular type of use that limits the opportunities of zoning.
Maybe I don't understand something here. You're saying it's never been subdivided and it's in the town? We have unsubdivided land?
It is unplatted land that is a part of the annexed regency park overlay land.
Okay, but it is a parcel.
It is a parcel.
And that parcel can be sold.
The applicant decided, this applicant has decided to come through and move this process forward to this level on this preliminary and final plat. Or this PRD ten zoned parcel of land.
But it, it has been subdivided into one parcel. It can be bought and sold.
I would welcome the applicant to come forward and speak to any rationale if they'd like to why they feel they would need to do this next step as opposed to trying to sell the land from a parcel standpoint.
Think you're touching on something, Commissioner, that might be known to everyone, but that land is sold based on a legal description, not just a meets and bounds definition of a, of a, of a piece of land. So in, in order to market and sell this piece of land, it has to be a platted lot. If I might compare it somehow to a development that we did, which was the Jackson Creek Senior Living, that was platted as one lot. And at the plat stage, if I might say, predates pretty much everyone here, you know, which similarly showed one lot easements, you know, maybe some setbacks, not much else at that stage. And this would be similar, larger, because that was maybe eight acres and this is like twenty acres. So it is similar to the senior living lot in that way.
Pausing. Are you pausing?
I'm sorry, I, I just. I'm I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. And I, I don't even know if I'm so.
Okay, I have a question. I don't want to deny a landowner of anything that the landowner is entitled to get, okay? But I'm a little confused here. Could this same twenty acres be combined with some of the other acres on that particular development? And come in with a different plat to build different things other than what we're looking at tonight?
It's conceivable that that land could be sold. Someone may have a different thought, market changes, what have you. And it behooves them to move forward and subdivide further than what it would be, which is the one lot.
So, okay. So it could be if some, if the developer sold what they've got now.
With a platted lot, yes.
With platted lot. Then that platted lot would stay, right?
Yes. Until, until it be developed and whatever needs to be developed, if it needs to be subdivided further.
Okay, but what I'm saying, but the question I'm asking, I'm just trying to get my mind clear here. That twenty acres, does it have to be sold by itself without regard to anything else around it? By the, by the owner?
Not quite sure I understand what you mean by everything else around it.
What I'm saying is, is that twenty-one, can that only be platted as a twenty acres?
No, there's probably many ways it could be platted, but it does have defined boundaries based on the Higbee Road off of Bowstring and off of the road, the, the boundary that's already there in the RPO. And the applicant's deciding to make it one lot.
One lot. But it could be combined with other pieces of land in there to be a bigger lot. Is that correct?
Than it currently is?
Yes.
Let's look.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Here's your current zoning map. So purity four and this here have already been developed. This is this site that's in this orange. PMD, the line in between the PMD and the PRD ten is Bowstring. So you already have a right of way that's separating these out into two separate parcels. This is already developed, this is already developed, and this is Higbee Road. So the idea of that being combined with any other piece of land to be larger beyond jumping a right of way is not an option. Does that answer your question? Pass, pass Bowstring? No, because you have public right of way that'll be there. Higbee Road, yes. It's all developed. Correct. Or platted.
I have one last question. I promise it'll be my last one. If this is already a subdivided lot, are we here, is, is our purpose here really to make a decision on Higbee Road? Is that, is that what we're really doing?
Yes.
Because it's already a one lot subdivision. So this whole thing has really been about Higbee Road.
Correct.
Okay.
The whole thing, I think, is to circumvent code to allow for narrower, narrower right away. That's what, that's what they're looking for.
Okay, I understand.
But as a preliminary final plat is brought in, regardless of Higbee Road being involved or not, it does go before planning commission for a approval or denial or approval with conditions. So it is a part of the public. No, it's an unplatted lot. It has meets and bounds, and now it will get an official plat and a legal description.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. I understand that the public comment portion of this has already come and gone, but I have seen interest from the public to speak. So if you'd like to speak to that.
Well, we've already closed the public comment. Yeah, so that's already been closed. We apologize, but yeah, this is a commissioner's notes, so we're going to keep going on. So we're continuing on at this point.
But we didn't have the information to comment that was now been exposed. So, you know, we didn't have anything in common.
Sure. Yeah, well, let us continue on with the commissioners and then we'll get with the staff to figure out if we can go ahead and pull that out, okay? Go ahead, Dan.
Make sure that I'm asking the right question here. Okay, the concern I have this before, and I heard a lot of what you said, and I didn't like some of what you said, to be truthful with you.
Understand.
One of the responsibilities this planning commission and something is brought before us is to have our say to the council on what we believe that the comprehensive plan has asked to be considered when anything is built in our community. And I know for a fact, our community does not like rental properties. And here we're talking about approving a plat that's going to ultimately end up with a rental twenty acres of rental property in single family dwellings. They don't like apartments, so I know they don't like single rental properties. And so we're being asked and told, well, you can't talk about all that because of the zoning, I guess. And so I have some real problems with that. And so there's got to be a way for us to overcome that. I'm just not in a position at this moment to do that.
What this, what planning commission and what the town can do is they could change the code. But we can't change the code tonight.
And that is, are there any other planning commissioners that have the same concerns that I have before I keep pushing this issue? Because I'm not here just to push a dead issue.
I think I definitely agree with you. I have the same issues. I think what planning is looking for from us though is guidance on Higbee. So that could be in the form of a condition.
Correct.
Okay, or a continuance, if you want more information about how to circumvent code. But I think that's really the, the crux of the issue is the right of way.
I, Commissioner Trujillo, I think one of the issues, I mean, the, the, the portion that we are hung up on is again, just like Commissioner Green, Commissioner Oars, is the future. Then the future, just like we identified, is how are we going to set this up for success for all within the community? A lot of questions coming up, and I understand that are out there, but I would recommend a continuance on this issue because we have two different things that are lapsed into this. And the contention is if we say yes to one, we're sort of, we're sort of corralled into a next segment that we cannot get out of. And it sort of pencils the city council to say, yes, you said this, but you also meant this, and that's not what we're trying to do here. It's two different issues. The continuance, I would ask, would be something similar to segregate the expansion of Higbee for Triview. One standalone issue that can literally negate or push forward to the property owner on how we proceed with that plat, that P, you know, that ten on that backend, because there's a lot of questions from the community. If we keep them together, we're going to be stuck in a continuance down the line that we have no clarity, but we get penciled into, like I said, similar to the effect that happened on the apartment buildings that are going up here in Jackson Creek.
Plot five.
Plot five. That was, that was a complete, the city council had to make a decision. It became a legal issue. So before we get into that legal realm of situations, my recommendation would be a continuance. Because it has to be very clear on, one, what Triview is asking. My opinion, Triview, I'd say extend it because we're anticipating twenty forty to be something that we do not know the roller coaster that's coming. We're averaging about eighteen hundred people a month just in El Paso County alone. I don't think you guys, I, I think we're going to get bigger and bigger. We're going to be the next emperor. I don't think we're seeing that yet. That's just my own opinion. But I think if we leave it lapsed together with. But I think if we leave it lapsed together with the property or the plats, we're stuck. I think they should be two separate issues that allow for us to look at it in a continuance that is before us, so that way Tribe View can present their case. I understand and I agree with you, but also the property owner can present their case. I agree with the actual way you did the senior living community. There's no question. I understand it. But the issue is if the property owner sells it and now it's a bigger issue, even though it's ten, ten units per acre. What about going up? It's limited to thirty five acre or thirty five feet now, but what else can go there? And that's the issue that we have within the community. My recommendation would be a continuance in order for us to get more information, in order for us to make an educated decision.
I would second your recommendation.
And that's, I would, I would also add, I think, uh, it'd be wise for us to have the city attorney here too, the town attorney.
Hundred percent agree. I would have in that continuance, a, the city attorney either online to give us guidance associated with this, because again, I never want to hold up the developer, never want to hold up the property owner, and I never want to hold up any aspect of this. But again, looking at it from the community's ability to entrust in us to give that fair comments. I think the public has a lot of questions. We have a lot of questions and you can see that turmoil that we have up here to say, hey, wait a minute, this doesn't make sense. If we're unclear and the public's unclear and the property owner has a clear idea of it, then that's only one third of the actual problem that is not getting solved. But we, the people that live here are going to be the ones that are going to be running into the problems. That would be my recommendation is a continuance on this issue. Segregate the two issues, Tribe View as far as Higbee Road expansion. And number two, the motion to literally expand, uh, the property that's located there as identified as, what is this, PUD ten, right?
This is zeal. Yeah, the, the zoning is PRD ten.
Correct.
But the preliminary final plat, which is what this is discussing.
I, yes, if we can separate the two and then bring that up in a continuance, whether, whatever date we can do that on, because then it's very clear on exactly what we're discussing here.
So you want to separate zoning from the plating process?
No. I want to separate the two issues, the two issues of Tribe View and the expansion of Higbee Road. Then talk about the zoning or the plating.
I don't think there's a separate issue there. So the issue only comes into play with the plating. So they're, they're combined. It's one issue.
We're, in no way are we talking about zoning in this application.
The plating then would be, yeah, but it has to be a, because we don't have enough, we, there's, there's not enough information there. It has to be segregated.
Are you saying that the, the information that's lacking is about Higbee Road specifically?
Yeah, I, I think we were, um, I, I feel like I need more time. I, I don't care whether you, whether you separate the two issues or bring them back together. I think I just, I didn't read the packet correctly. I was looking at the wrong things. And when I heard the presentation and understood this is really about Higbee and how much the applicant may have to dedicate to make Higbee the right. I just, I need more time. I need to read the packet differently.
Also, I think you, you said the, the ordinance would have to be changed, correct? To, to address some of my concerns.
If planning commission has concerns with what's already provided in PRD ten.
Yes.
That's something that would have to play out in a different process than this.
Okay.
And it would be a change to zoning.
Okay.
And an ordinance.
And how would that matter be addressed? That particular, if this is put on hold. How could that matter be addressed?
The planning commissioners, I believe, asking for administrate, for a legislative change of land use.
That would be separate from putting this on hold. We put this on hold and then that would be something else that we would put on the table?
Not sure that the planning commission has the power to put an application on hold for a preliminary final plat based on zoning questions. Cause the zone.
You're not sure, but that's why we can go on hold to find out.
I don't think we're asking for a hold. I think we're asking, you're asking for a continuance.
Table this.
We want a continuance is what you're asking.
Correct. That's correct.
So if we continue this, what information are we going to get back before the next meeting?
Staff's understanding is you're asking for more information about Higbee Road and what's being presented by Tribe View.
I, I'm, I'm afraid to help answer your question. Um, for the planning commission to suggest changing the zoning would be almost impossible because you would have to have, uh, the agreement of the property owner, which I do not think we're going to get. I mean, to try to change zoning against the property owner's wishes is pretty much impossible. Um, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, we don't have a little bit more information, just as Bob said, you know? There, there are one lot subdivisions with multifamily that come in for preliminary and final subdivision, but you understand what that one lot subdivision is and, and I, there's some questions about that. I don't know if they'll ever be resolved. I would like more time because I really would like to go back and look at maps and roadways and right of ways and understand Higbee Road. I, I would like a little bit of time to do that. Um, I, I didn't see that there was such a tight connection and such a decision that had to be made tonight.
I'm really talking about a right of way line on a plat.
I know.
Yeah.
Whether it's, uh, smaller or wider.
Correct. Certainly.
So can you just tell me if I'm right or wrong? Um, this request could have came in without any type of housing presentation at all. Correct or not?
That is correct.
If that's correct, that would be my recommendation as far as a continuation, make them both standalone. If Tribe View can come in and tell us exactly what they're looking for, whether or not it's going to affect it, then we can come back and talk about the, the property in relation to the future of that one. I mean, it's, because it's already plotted, got it, it's done.
It's not plotted. It's unplatted.
It's unplatted.
This preliminary final plat application allows it to be legally platted so that it can be legally sold.
Correct.
For potential developer.
Commissioner, I have another question for the staff. In, in the process of you working with the applicant, the owner, to get us where we are tonight. Talking about the comprehensive plan, did you make any comments to the owners and the developers that our community doesn't really want rental properties in our?
It's not the staff's place to ask or make that comment.
Oh.
Staff needs to look at the, we are asked to look at the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I'll take you back. We are to look at the criteria of approval. First thing is the plat conforms with the town's comprehensive plan. We reviewed that. We looked at it based on the comprehensive plan's direction. That's a two, two-step profit process of substantial compliance with the flu. And it's consistent with the adaptive policies. When you look at the flu, you have residential attached, which includes patio homes, duplexes, townhouses, garden apartments. It does not speak to homeownership versus rental, as I understand it.
Well, if in that comprehensive plan, the community clearly says, we prefer and do not like apartment buildings, which is rentals. I'm going to say the same principle applies to a rental community. Even though it's not, it's, I'm just, I'm not trying to beat you to death. I'm just telling you where I'm coming from.
Understood.
Cause I know what our community has asked for and they're not trying to be unreasonable. So I'm going to ask the owner. Did you consider the fact that when you put this together, that our, our community really doesn't care for apartments and, and similar? Sure. I wish you would, because I'm just trying to get my mind set on what's the right thing to do. Okay?
Well, I'm, homeownership is, is a, is a difficult subject. Um, this, uh, property, um, certainly could be developed in, in a number of ways. We're not trying to prescribe that today by asking you to approve a plat. Um, however, uh, I hear your concern. Um, the senior living community that we developed and continue to own um, contains, uh, a community of residents that enjoy the benefits of a wellness community that is possible through, uh, a rental structure, which happens to be similar to the presentation, although much less dense and uh, much different type of community, but a, but a community focused on wellness. I think it's a great asset for the, uh, for the town, but it is the question today. And I hate to even speak to it, but it's what you're, I think you're asking me to speak to.
Okay, and, 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 and I see this different than the senior level because this is not a senior community. It's not over fifty. So what's going to be in those rental units? God only knows. And I do not believe that our community is going to be acceptance and appreciative of that.
I'm sure they'll follow the Fair Housing Act.
I'm sure they'll follow the Fair Housing Act.
And give people equal opportunities to.
I'm sure they'll follow an equal opportunity, but I'm telling you, there's a difference between a, a fifties communities or a seniors community and just a general rental community, whether a community permits such a thing to be there. There's nothing that says that we can say, we don't want that in here. And I don't believe we're breaking any laws, are we?
You could say whatever you'd like.
Exactly. Well, I am.
Yes.
Uh, but you, you understand, I'm not trying to be unreasonable. But I do, I guess I am because I have a lot of concern about a rental community of twenty acres in amongst all of the single family residential units that we have in this same development.
Might I respond only with the, the idea of transitional zonings from single family to PRD ten, which is more dense, to the PMD property, which you know is proposed to, to have potentially apartments on it, uh, to commercial. Cause nobody wants to own a home and back up to a shopping center and have a half million dollar home there, right? So there's transitional zonings. And so these zonings have been in place since nineteen eighty seven, uh, shortly before we bought, bought the property. So they've been in place a long time. Uh, but I totally respect what you're saying, uh, is.
Yeah, again, for the staff and all of yous there. This is residential attached, but there are more things that could be on that zoning, right? This is just a small number.
Trying to go to the permitted uses of.
Yeah, and, and that permitted uses, I think you pointed it out. And so there's a, huh?
So share this again. All of the permitted uses fall within more of a residential setting. If you look at them based on the accessory, their conditional permitted uses. So it's all different forms of residential. Schools could be in there. Religious assembly could be in there, golf course, open space park. Um, but the rest of it's all primarily, uh, residential services, residential housing.
Think the community probably prefer to see a religious assembly up there than, but anyway.
One of the recommendations obviously that we had was to recommend a continuance to gather further information associated with both Tribe View and the property to potentially talk or discuss about plating issues in the future for this property because the information is not complete. A lot of contentious issues, but again, we also have, uh, more information, uh, than we originally had that I think even the public would like to discuss. We haven't had that, once we closed that public opinion, we had several different people from the public to include public that is here that would like to ask questions. But I think by splitting that in the continuance, it would allow for the public to get a clear idea and understanding of what is actually being presented here. I understand it is one item, Tribe View expansion of Higbee. There's no question. But I think it brought to light several other issues that are associated with that plat.
Staff would like to remind you that this, any action tonight, other than continuance doesn't mean that this is an approved preliminary final plat.
Correct.
It would go forward to town council and any public members that have been on the uh, online connection tonight or are in the room tonight have the ability to speak during the public hearing of the town council.
Yes, sir.
As another way of facilitating what you've brought up in terms of getting more public comment.
Correct, and it's definitely a benefit across the board.
But so if we table this.
Are you asking for a continuance? When you say table, are you asking for a?
Continuance, yes.
But they can still move forward to the council. Is that's what you're telling me?
No.
No, the continuance would mean that it would stay.
We're going to stand fast for.
Stay for another planning commission meeting.
I second your recommendation and yes.
My, my request, my, uh, my motion, uh, Commissioner Trujillo would be requesting continuance, requesting continuance. I move that the planning commission continue the public hearing for ZIL at Jackson Creek preliminary final plat to the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I will now continue the vote. Um, I'll start from the beginning.
It'll be a vote.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I bet.
Good.
Yep.
Perfect.
Sir. Um, also for staff, I'd like to make sure that we have the town attorney available.
Yes.
It will be that the town attorney will be made available for the continuance.
Thank you, sir. At this time.
Go ahead.
And you also, you, you said you weren't sure whether we could make, uh, uh, ask for the zoning to be changed. Can you see that that question gets?
What staff said was zoning is not applicable to this application.
That's right.
Commissioners are more than welcome to say what they want to say. You could provide a condition of approval if you'd like to include a statement about land use. However, and we'll have this town, we'll have the town attorney here to answer this. That condition is not necessarily applicable and won't apply for this application. But we will see from the town attorney whether or not.
That, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I want that. Yes, thank you.
Very well. It's been voted on. Obviously the request of a continu- Very well. It's been voted on. Obviously, the request of a continuance, we have a second on that. At this time, are there any other comments associated with that? We're going to be moving on.
Chairman.
Sir.
We didn't take a roll call on the continuance. Is there a reason for that?
Because he can do that. Chair can do that without.
Oh, sorry, go ahead for a roll call, you said.
Yep.
So.
Sorry about that. So, roll call on the continuance. We have Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
No, and with all due respect to the other members of the commission, I think if, if, if I want to be personally consistent in living with the comprehensive plan like I have in the past, I feel I need to do the same tonight. And so I would have to vote no. I would have approved with conditions that we extend the right of way from 95 feet to 100 feet, 120 feet, according to code. And that's my reason for voting no.
I'll continue. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
I vote yes. And, and because I would like to put those legal questions about the right of way to the attorney before.
That leaves the roll call five yes, one no.
Thank you. Next item, we're going to go ahead and move on to non-agenda public items. This is land development only, and I leave this open to staff if we have any other issues for today.
Would you not?
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Ray. Reports, communication, and announcements. First off, commissioners, any reports, any communications or announcements?
I, I have a quick thing for staff. I wanted to say thank you to the way you did your presentations. I appreciate that you're not reading, you know, every word of their line anymore. And I, you know, I like how you're doing the, this many out of this many are substantial. And it's, I'm going to go back and, and look, it's going to help me go through, I think, staff reports with greater ease. So I appreciated that. I, just one more thing. I hope we have a chance to work on PUDs, although this really wasn't one of them. The Maverick was part of the PUD that was long before your time and our time. And I appreciate that you worked with them on the color palette. But I wish in future PUDs, that's what he said. He, maybe you didn't, I don't know, but he said that. In future PUDs, I'd like to see us do those, figure out who's doing them, the architectural design guidelines and color palettes at that stage of the game when it should be done, rather than late in the process when the developer is saying, oh, well, you know, we have our own architectural review committee that are doing our design guidelines, which is bogus. But yeah, I'd like to talk about that more someday.
Okay.
Sir.
I had a comment question for staff, for the other members of the commission. The comprehensive plan is pretty near and dear to me, and I know to others on the planning commission as well. We're, we're coming up on seven, almost eight years since the last comprehensive plan was, you know, reconsidered and put into play. And I think you may have answered some of this for me already, Jeff, but could you give us some idea where we stand in developing a new comprehensive plan in terms of timing and, and how our input might be utilized?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Egley. We are currently, so there is funding secured for a comprehensive plan update, full-blown update. An RFP has been drafted. A draft version has been put together. We have a new planning director who's joined us. She's not here tonight because she is sick, very sick, probably still like scraping herself off a floor maybe, but she'll be back soon. And I am excited to have her meet you all. She's a great addition to this. No, I am, I am. She's a great addition. And I, I find her leadership fantastic, and we will be moving forward. She's looking at the RFP right now. And well, we are work, she's making those, those decisions and moving us forward to getting us to the point where we are finding a consultant who can help us, and we could start kicking off that comprehensive plan effort, which will probably happen in the beginning of 2024.
And then, as I understand, the process at some point that will sit on our desk, on this screen in front of us for our review and ultimate approval.
Sorry, ask that question again.
So that'll find, that will come to us at some point before it goes to Town Council for our final approval and any adjustments that we want to make to that or.
Of the RFP or the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan.
Yes, the comprehensive plan's going to be about an 18-month process, and you'll be, you'll be involved. And yes, the.
We're seeing.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. All the process of that is yet to be determined, but you will be in deeply involved in that. And yes, by standards, yes, the, the planning commission will be the ones to recommend and present that comprehensive plan update to the Town Council for approval.
Great, thanks.
This is, that's probably a 2025 agenda item.
If it's possible, it would really be nice if one or two of the planning commission could be a part of choosing the consulting firm, if, if there's a way to work it in. I don't know.
Staff will pass that on to the director and let that person make that decision.
Do you have to vote?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Just to bounce off of what Kathy and Mr. Egley, Commissioner Egley was saying too, in preparation for that process possibly beginning in January, I think now would be a great time to lock down the planning commission. So we still have, I'm, for example, I'm still an alternate. We have some people who have not been here at all. How do we fix that?
Yeah.
So that we know, we, we have realistic expectations going.
Absolutely. And thank you for bringing that up. That was something that the director was going to bring up tonight if she had been here. She has a number of questions and items. She wants to learn more from you. She wants to hear from you, your thoughts. And there are definitely planning commission administrative items at, at the right now that we need to resolve here in the closing of the year.
Well, thank you, Jeff. And that's, I've met the planner on Monday night during the council meeting, and I hope I'm not sick.
I want to thank you, Ray, for you sent us an amendment to the packet. And in the context of your text, you, I mean, your email, you gave us an idea of what to look for in that amendment. We've gotten amendments before that I had no idea in the world, am I going to have to read everything? So at least thank you for directing our mind toward what the amendment would contain, because it saves us a lot of pain and agony sometimes.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I did my best to just make it clear.
You did what, you did well. Thank you, sir.
The only thing I would request, Jeff, is going to be the Quora, the Quora piece of the Microsoft Teams, things along that lines, just how we can work that most efficiently. Most of the correspondence that I get is going to be on my personal email. If there's a Quora request, it's going to open up my Pandora's box of what I've been doing on my personal email. Okay, it becomes a Quora request to opening that. Now, whether or not it's, I don't know the solution to that problem. And I don't know, you know, obviously when I got that request to join Microsoft Teams, I was like, nope, don't want that. It's an email coming to me, then it's an email coming to me saying, hey, are you a part of the commission this evening? Yes, I can respond and it's back and forth. But that Quora request becomes a, almost a open book. And that's why I want to make sure that if we can find a way to make sure the communication is there, however, it limits access to, prevents my personal information from being exposed to the outside world.
So I, I do believe through Quora, every way that we've communicated before, that's still the case.
That's correct.
Regardless.
Yes, sir.
Whether it's a Teams or not.
And that's what I don't know.
But I'm not the one handling the question.
Yes, sir.
The director is.
Correct.
And so I advise you to reach out to her for more thoughts on that.
Sure. And, and that's, the only thing I'm asking is just, again, I'll ask everyone, you know, get the opportunity to do so. But again, it goes into what Commissioner Redd said earlier about the legal aspect of this. And it's more so to protect us as a body to make sure that we're having these conversations. But again, there may be some that are biased where, hey, I want to know why he said that. Well, you know, if I'm having a discussion with my friend Danny, that's my neighbor, you know, that's just a conversation we're having. But if it goes into Quora, now it's like, okay, what date, what emails, and all everything else that's associated with it. So it becomes a very sticky situation. Do you think?
I could add.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to say that I could add to the statement overall. I've discussed with the planning director, your similar suggestion after the email conversation that we had had. I believe it's a potential solution in the future for us to supply all of the commission members with a town of monument email. So it would just be your own email specific to just town of monument, planning commission communication. And it would not be, or just that planning email would then become subject to Quora, and it wouldn't have to go to any of your personal accounts.
That would be great, right? I mean, if we could set that up, because then that way it's a direct link. We're signing into something that allows us to communicate. That would be perfect. Great work, great workaround. Other than that, the only other question I would ask is before, about two years ago, we had the conversation, and we always have this conversation around the end of the year, about having legal representation with us. We have this every time. And again, this is, we're having a great discussion here, but I, I think it's always been ideally to have the legal representation here. Why he's not here, I don't know. But if we can have him here at these planning commission meetings regardless, because again, I think even in the background, if we have a question where we can ask him, not only for our knowledge or edification to say, hey, this is why we're doing X, and can it be done? I think it would move this thing a lot quicker and a lot faster to come to solutions and remedies.
Staff will carry that message forward up to the director.
Yes, sir.
And all up to.
Yeah, and I, to hitchhike on that, I would think, had we've had the attorney available to us tonight, and based on my concerns and other concerns, he may have been able to squashed some of my concerns right away and say, ain't no way it's ever going to be changed from what it is. You understand what I'm saying? And we wouldn't have had to have a continuance. And I think that's the point you're trying to make, isn't it? Because again, you know, I sincerely mean this. I don't like to cause a landowner or developer problems unless what they're asking for is not going to be good for our community. Then, then I'm, I'm going to do what I do, but I'm not doing it just for the hell of doing it.
Understood.
Okay?
Understood.
But lawyers can often tell me, well, Danny, you, you just got a problem. But then the lawyer might tell me something else.
You know, even if they're online, because they're, they're in Denver, aren't they? Our legal staff.
The attorney that we have on contract, I believe, is out of Denver, yes.
You know, so, you know, if they're remote, we don't have a problem with that, do we? They can hear the conversation.
He's remote Monday.
Yeah.
He's remote Monday night.
Yeah, last two minutes. You know, so we're not necessarily asking for him to be right there, or look him in the eye, or whatever.
Understood.
They, they hear, they can give us the legal opinion, or they can say, well, I'm going to have to look into that and get back to you.
And also, it's, it's not that you are not informative or that you don't have the information. I will give you another reason to have an attorney here. More than once, we have voted a certain way, and it's gone to council. And the attorney at the council meeting has said, oh, you can't do that. And, you know, I thought, well, it would have been nice if we had known that before it got to council.
I understand that sentiment for sure.
Yeah. Because we don't want to send anything up to the council. They say, what the hell is that plan information doing? You know, when we made a recommendation to them, we wanted to say, hey, we need to look at this real hard. They got a point.
I understand.
All right. Reports, communication, and announcements. Commissioners already spoke. Planning staff, any other announcements, recommendations, or communications?
Nope.
None. At this time, I move to adjourn, and we will have our next meeting on December 13th at six o'clock. So. Second out.